Good evening. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for September 10, 2024. Before we begin, I'm going to say a few words about attending and participating in our meetings. And even though I know that we are one of the most educated and intelligent cities in the country, I just think we should all hear the same rules together. So individuals are not allowed to disrupt the meeting, and disruption includes talking out of turn or without permission, interrupting or making sounds when someone else is talking, or approaching council members or city employees who are staffing the meeting. If a person disrupts the meeting, I will give a warning, and the person's remaining comment time or ask the person to leave the room for the rest of the meeting. My hope and personal request is that people will express themselves without name-calling, taunting, or disparaging others, and I do believe that is within all our capacities, and it's what we normally, how we typically treat each other in Bellevue. So, thank you for that. City Clerk, can we do roll call?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Noonhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmember Zahn.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noonhouse, will you lead us in the flag salute, please?
I'll rise first. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the its citizens, with liberty and justice for all.
We have three proclamations tonight. The first one is Hunger, Action, and Awareness Month. It will be read by Councilmember Stokes, and when he's finished, we're going to invite Nikki and Kizir Sharif, Jennifer Fisher, and Leslie Koutrulis up to speak to us. So, Councilmember Stokes, do you want to start?
Okay, thank you. Whereas food insecurity occurs when individuals or households lack reliable access to affordable, nutritious food, and whereas food needs are one of the most common reasons for King County residents to contact social service providers, and whereas Hispanic, Black, and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander residents and people with disabilities are disproportionately represented among people seeking food assistance in Bellevue, King County, and many places across the country, and whereas one in five Bellevue school-aged children experience food insecurity, whereas children facing hunger are more likely to experience developmental delay, repeat school years, and experience social and behavioral challenges, and whereas Bellevue desires to build a future where no one goes hungry and where all residents have access to healthy, culturally responsive, affordable, fresh, locally-made, and sustainably-produced food, and whereas we command food banks, emergency and hot meal programs, and the hundreds of volunteers working with our local cities, local faith organizations, and social service agencies to address the rising hunger needs, and whereas we encourage Bellevue community members to donate or volunteer to the local food bank, our human services partner agency, and help combat local food insecurity and hunger. Now therefore, I, John Stokes, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Hunger, Action, and Awareness Month in Bellevue, and we strongly urge all residents to join area food banks, ensuring what they can to support our neighbors who are hungry.
Thank you. So, I'll have you speak, and when we're done with all the proclamations, then we'll do pictures.
Thank you. Well, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council Members, thank you for this honor. I'm Leslie Koutrulis. I'm current Chair and President of the Board of Directors for Bellevue LifeSpring, as well as Vice President of Finance at T-Mobile. Bellevue LifeSpring is grateful for the partnership with the City of Bellevue and the support and funding you provide us and other nonprofit organizations that do work on behalf of combating hunger. We, on behalf of all of those working this issue, I am honored to accept the proclamation. And childhood hunger is a critical issue facing our community, and to share more is Jennifer Fisher.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Fisher, a Bellevue resident for 32 years, and the Executive Director of Bellevue LifeSpring. And I wanted to thank Leslie, as we are so fortunate to have her lead our organization, as we commit to ensure that every child in our Bellevue community has access to the proper nutrition they need to not only succeed in the classroom but in life. As you all know, there are 4,300 students in our school district that are at risk of hunger every day. That is the highest percentage and the highest number in the history of our city. Bellevue LifeSpring is currently supporting 3,200 of those students. That means that we have a gap of about one quarter of those students. We are currently not reaching 1,100 students, and our goal as an organization and as a community is to close this gap. As part of the Hunger, Action, and Awareness proclamation and month, we commit to working together with you, our nonprofit community partners, as well as individuals in the community that ensure that we build a community where no child or person ever experiences hunger, because we know there are 4,300 children right here that are depending on us. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Nikki and Kizir.
Good evening. My name is Kizir Sharif. I'm the co-founder of Maps MRC, and this is Nikki, who is the founder.
Hello, Mayor Robinson, and council members. Thank you for having us here, and Kizir will talk about the rest of what we do.
Yeah. Thank you. And first of all, I'd like to thank the City of Bellevue and the council for the proclamation. It means a lot. We are the Humanity Edom Program of the Muslim Association of Puget Sound, and we, MRC, serves as a platform that brings together a lot of our mosques, Islamic schools, and other organizations, including several in Bellevue, to really help address this issue to serve the less fortunate in the greater Seattle area. We are an extended part of the greater Seattle area and the extended Puget Sound community. We do not discriminate based on the basis of race, color, religion, gender, or any other We provide a whole broad portfolio of interconnected services, but the core pillar of our service is our food programs. Just last year, we served over 7,500-plus families by providing them with nonperishable food assistance. Over 2,500 families received food boxes during our annual Ramadan food program, food drives that we conduct in the month of Ramadan. Each month, we are at different shelters, serving hot meals to people in different shelters. Just last year, we served about 3,500-plus hot meals across multiple shelters and tent city encampments, and more importantly, we have a program for food guards, and we are amongst very few organizations that provide food guards for those who are, who need access to food. So last year, we distributed at least $75,000 or more worth of food guards through our multiple offices' locations. One thing that we've noticed is that as EBT benefits are getting cut and food assistance programs that were put in place during the COVID pandemic are being withdrawn, we are seeing a whole massive increase in the number of clients who are coming to us for food assistance, and people are coming to us for socially and culturally appropriate food assistance. That's a huge gap. Local food banks can't just provide those kind of like, you know, socially and culturally appropriate food, and that's a gap that we are trying to address through some of the services that we are providing. And we're looking forward to, with continued support from the city, we are looking forward to serving more and more clients who are coming to us for food assistance. So, again, we are thankful to cities such as Bellevue who have provided us with grants that allows us to support clients who are facing food insecurity. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, next, we have Councilmember Lee reading the National Service Dog Proclamation, and Amy Sherlock and her daughter Blakely and their service dog will be accepting. And then after this is all done, we will, you can come up and sit down. We'll take a picture after all three proclamations are done. Go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This must be one of my favorite proclamations for the man's best friend, our dogs. So, whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act allows public accommodations for service animals, which include individually-trained dogs doing works or performing tasks for the benefits of people with a disability, and whereas in the United States, only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and the need is growing, and whereas K-9 Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly-trained service dogs, ongoing services, and a committed community of support, and whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them, and whereas the City of Bellevue recognizes an inclusive community where all community members and their service dogs are embraced and welcomed. Now therefore, I, Conroy Lee, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the city council, to hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Service Dog Month in Bellevue, and encourage community members to celebrate these task-trained service animals, and respect the rights of adults, children, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of their assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Amy and Blakely.
It's her ninth birthday.
I heard that. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday. So yeah, I'm Amy Sherlock, and this is, you want to say hi?
Hi. I can't reach her.
Hi.
Say your name.
I'm Blakely.
So, on behalf of K-9 Companions, this is our first dog that we have raised, so we don't really, we're not doing the best that we can. I know, we're trying our best, I guess, but we've seen what they have done for the community and for other individuals. My sister raised a dog two years ago, and it got paired with a little boy in Portland in a wheelchair, and so we saw the effects of that. And so we thought, as a family, we decided that we wanted to give it a try, and we knew it would be hard, and we do have to give him back in May. So, we hope that that process goes well with our family, but we know that it's for our greater good. So, we're excited, and the mission that they, you know, the bringing awareness to the organization and the benefits of their service, which are free of cost. And then this is my husband.
I'm Chris Sherlock, her husband. I'm late, sorry.
Soccer practice, too, for other daughter. We just hope that we are able to enhance the independence for people with disabilities with this free-of-cost animal that will hopefully help them. Sorry, it's a lot if you have anything else to say.
You did great. Sounds good.
Terrific. Thank you so much. We'll ask you to come back up for a picture when we're done.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have Councilmember Hamilton reading the Teen Mental Health Awareness Day proclamation, and we have Anisha Veche, Rithika Benu, and Leah Sebastian, who will be accepting that, if you want to come sit down. Go ahead, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas early identification, intervention, and treatment of mental illness and behavioral health disorders can improve and even save lives, and whereas according to the World Health Organization, half of all mental health conditions start by age 14, but most cases are undetected and untreated, and whereas Teen Mental Health Awareness Day is designed to increase awareness of mental health issues for teenagers and eliminate stigmas surrounding preventative mental health, and whereas teenagers can experience high levels of stress and anxiety about school, family, friends, health, and money, and whereas it is important to learn the signs and symptoms of mental health conditions, to seek and receive help when needed, and whereas teens today pave the way for a better tomorrow, it is essential they learn early about the importance of mental health and have easy access to resources, and whereas it is important to acknowledge the intersectionality between mental health, race, ethnicity, gender identity, sexual orientation, and disability. Teens in marginalized communities experience larger disparities in mental health services and have higher rates of mental illness. Now therefore, I, Dave Hamilton, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September 10, 2024, as Teen Mental Health Awareness Day in Bellevue, Washington, and encourage all people to do their part to increase teen mental health awareness in our community.
Thank you. Welcome.
Many teens experience anxiety, depression, especially as we navigate physical and emotional changes. The pressure to succeed academically, athletically, and socially, especially through social media, can be challenging. Unlike physical pain, emotional struggles often go unspoken. As a phone worker at Teen Link, a peer-to-peer support phone line, I have seen firsthand how teens repress some of their hardest mental struggles from those closest to them. To break the stigma around mental health, we need to foster open conversations and create an environment of understanding and empathy. This will empower teens to seek help without fear of judgment.
Before I start speaking, just a quick introduction. I'm Rithika Benu, and I'm from Interlake, and I'm so thankful to be here. When teens feel safe and seek help, it not only eases the emotional burden they carry, but also empowers them to recognize and address mental health struggles in themselves and others. As they realize they are not alone and learn coping mechanisms and strategies, the potential to save lives significantly increase, especially given that, according to the CDC, suicide is the third-leading cause of death among adolescents aged 15 to 19. As a student who has witnessed firsthand the struggles of teen and peer hesitance to speak out, I know how challenging it can be to find ways to give comfort and support.
Hi, I'm Leah, and I go to Test System High School. And thus, on Teen Mental Health Awareness Day, we aim to foster open communities, just like how I noticed that people opened up more after receiving a positive note in a group setting during a mental health cookie sale that I ran. The importance of September 10, Teen Mental Health Awareness Day, is to bring awareness to students going back into the stressful school year, and this day can prevent mental health issues from turning into crises, as people won't feel as judged to reach out. Helping struggling teens through a difficult time in their life will help improve the lives of members of our communities and protect our family and friends. Thank you to Mayor Lynn Robinson and the City of Bellevue for declaring Teen Mental Health Awareness Day.
Wonderful. Thank you. Can we do a picture together?
Of course.[1062.60]
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, city clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are eight preregistered speakers for oral communications. So before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So oral communication is for a period of no more than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to the City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. In both of those categories, the presiding officer has authorization to give preference to people who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days or who are going to speak on an item that will be in front of the council within the next 60 days. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and only three speakers are allowed to speak on any one side of a particular topic. So with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Heidi Dean, who is joining us virtually. Ms. Dean, can you hear me? Ms. Dean, can you?
Yes. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. First, I want to thank Community Development Director Emile King for his prompt response to resident concerns regarding noticing the Comp Plan Amendment update discussion for tonight's meeting. As someone who's been watching for that, it was disappointing to see the very late notice of this important item's addition to tonight's agenda. I hope you will support the request to add a study session prior to giving staff direction to bring back an ordinance for the Comp Plan so that residents have time to listen, digest, and provide you with feedback. Because after all, the city's newsletter proclaim's "It's your city." I also wanted to thank the Planning Commission for their robust, intense, and very thoughtful June public hearings and discussion on July 10th. On behalf of many of my Newport Hills neighbors, as well as many people I've spoken to around the city, I'd like to express support for the Planning Commission's recommendation regarding neighborhood centers and the land use designation assigned to the zonings for those parcels. We felt that the recommendation was fair to all and respectful to neighborhoods and the concept of neighborhood centers. With that, I'd like to acknowledge that Newport Hills residents are aware of the full-court press that the owners of our shopping center have engaged in to get council to make an 11th-hour modification to the Planning Commission's recommendation, resulting in a higher land use designation for their property. A site-specific rezone of a commercial property that was specifically not studied at that designation per council direction in late 2023 would not only be unusual, but legally and ethically questionable. So I ask that you not do that. I will be responding to the letter that you received from that owner group and addressing the mistruths that were in that letter, and you should be receiving a response from me within the next day or two. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Wannamaker, who is also joining us virtually. Ms. Wannamaker, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Mayor Robinson and council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Michelle Wannamaker. I live in Eastgate, and my address is on file. Resident, staff, the CAC, the Planning Commission, Transportation Commission, and this city council put in countless hours of work on the Eastgate I-90 land use and transportation project, Eastgate I-90 for short. The project applied growth to most of Eastgate's business properties with the focus of growth being in the EG TOD, right next to the Eastgate Park and Rite. In contrast to the EG TOD, the Eastgate I-90 project specified the rest of Eastgate's business properties were to be zoned for more modest growth. Even King County has said that for this 2044 Comp Plan update, growth should be focused in activity centers as opposed to neighborhood centers, and defines the EG TOD as one of those activity centers. However, the Recommended Future Land Use Map showed most of Eastgate's business properties as having the same density as the EG TOD, mid-rise. That includes the Neighborhood Center at Eastgate Plaza, where the former Albertson's, now Safeway, and Outback Restaurant reside. If I'm remembering correctly, staff have said they anticipate mid-rise to be six to 10 stories. Many of these office buildings back right up against single-family homes. Can you imagine enjoying your cup of coffee on the bath patio of your 1,200-square-foot Rambler while people are looking down at you from their offices six to 10 stories above you? While I was not a part of the Eastgate I-90 CAC, I researched their work extensively and was very involved while the Planning Commission was determining the appropriate land use codes. They looked at each area of Eastgate's business properties, section by section, determined the specific land characteristics, the critical areas, and the access to transit before they came to a decision on the land use code specifics. The Recommended Future Land Use Map looks like the city just used a broad paintbrush and designated most of Eastgate's business areas as mid-rise. It's a slap in the face to everyone who sacrificed time to be involved with the Eastgate I-90 project. And how are all these new residents and office workers going to get around? Except for at the Transit Center, there is limited bus service throughout Eastgate. That is why the Eastgate I-90 project specified the growth to be focused next to the Park and Rite. All the growth in areas outside of the EG TOD will be putting more and more vehicles onto our already clogged roads. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pamela Johnston, who's joining us in person.
Hi, I'm Pamela Johnston. I wanted to first thank you for considering making more study time for this session, especially with the debate that's going on. A lot of people were having plans that didn't hear about it quite soon enough. One of the things that I think that the Comp Plan represents is a lot of different people working on it. And that's why when it comes together at certain points, we really need to look at that as outreach. For example, when the final EIS comes in, there was no more outreach planned after that. When the final final came in, there was no outreach planned for that. So people didn't have the opportunity to ask questions like they did when they had things like at the school. Just because I just want more people to participate, and I think that would help. I want to thank you for virtual meetings, hybrid meetings. I don't know if that's in the plan, but I was just thinking about that while I was saying that. In the transportation section, we have a Comp Plan that shows the current list of bike projects, which is kind of confusing because there's all these bike projects going on. And so I don't think we have a strong indication on some of these things when they come back to council. In the Mobility Implementation Plan, they added Bell Red as a designation bike area. But why I would love to have bike lanes on Bell Red. It's, we don't have, it doesn't make sense when we're taking that for a long term. So I think that somewhere in there, we should have something about the timing of these plans. Like, is Bell Red is not, you know, it's got trucks on it and all this, is it a high priority? Because it's not in the high priority bike zones, but then it's on the mobility implementation zone. There's very much confusion for me on 124th, which has been closed for a year. They specifically designed it to have no bikes from Ichiro Way to Northrup. So why are we trying to make bike routes on Northrup when they specifically said they don't want them to go that way? They want them to go the other way, per design. So I think some of these things are examples that I would like you to see. I'm not really good with transportation, that you could see if they really make sense. Are we getting the full design? Are we getting back to council, which was said that we're supposed to get back for any road change, road diet? But there's one on Northeast 8 that's not been gone to council. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Quinn.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Paul Quinn, and I live in Somamish. I'm speaking to you as an individual that cares about recycling and composting and reducing what we send to the landfill. I want to give a shout out to Deputy Mayor Malakutian and Councilmember Nguyen House for their support of recycling and composting in Bellevue. Let's start with a reminder. Two-thirds of our trash can actually be recycled or composted. When I speak of diversion rates tonight, that means the percent of disposed tonnage diverted away from the landfill into recycling and food scraps composting. I provided four handouts for you in email. The first handout in Table 3 shows Bellevue's updated diversion rate year-to-date through July is down about 1% versus year-to-date 2023, July. And as important as the top graphic in the handout indicates, Bellevue's diversion rate has only gotten worse since 2021. Bellevue's 2030 Climate Action Plan diversion goal's 50%, and that gap indicates this city needs a new innovative approach to improve diversion rates and achieve the city's 2030 goal. Handout number 2 provides several specific recommendations for improving diversion rates. In addition, I'm pleased to recommend a pilot program called Smart Disposal to help significantly improve the city's diversion rates. The cost of the pilot program is approximately $200,000. Handout number 3 outlines how Smart Disposal works in some detail. I'll also now briefly describe what Smart Disposal is. Smart Disposal weighs each container emptied by the hauler for each single-family home. This system, through a postcard mailed to each resident, provides data specific to that resident based on their address, including a landfill diversion rate per pickup and a trend line over time. I provided handout number 4 to show an example postcard report residents would receive. This system helps us move from a toss-and-forget mindset towards making better choices. We all know that feedback through measurement works because our water, electricity, and gas, they're all metered, helping us to moderate our use. Smart Disposal effectively meters our actual use of the disposal utility. During the pilot, the city will work with its hauler and a limited set of residents to demonstrate the effectiveness of Smart Disposal in significantly improving diversion rates. And I'm happy to meet with city staff to review how the pilot works and provide detailed information of the budgeted costs and activities in the project. The City of Bellevue prides itself in being a city of innovation. People in the City of Bellevue want to live sustainably. They need the tools and the leadership of the council to help them increase their rate of recycling and composting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Rood.
Thank you, council. Is it this one?
Either of them.
Last fall, I related to some of you that I had been unable to get any enforcement on the noise regulations over the last 21 years. For example, after elevating the 2018 Labor Day complaint up the police department ladder, past your lawyers, and to the top of code compliance, the response I got was, "The City of Bellevue does not consider a chainsaw loud enough to create a noise disturbance." In other words, we don't understand the noise regulations, and we're not going to enforce them. Last fall, I asked some of you to get your staff some training in noise. So I saw the answer in our paper. It's that you've just made noise legal during the hours that the complaints come in, six to eight in the evening. Problem solved. You've given away almost every waking hour to unlimited noise in residential areas, and the police will not enforce in the few hours that you have spared us. This is unacceptable. We have a legal right to reasonable use and enjoyment of our properties, and we pay for law enforcement. The hours of 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. weeknights are needed for us to unwind after a stressful day at work. Parents need these hours to get the kids settled down and put to bed. Students need these hours to study. Couples need these hours to interact. Our homes are our refuge. In the evenings, the airwaves belong to residents, not contractors, not do-it-yourselfers, and not yard crews. In fairness, the police won't enforce noise ordinance because the seven of you have not given them the technical, legal, and political support or the equipment and training they need. We have a right not to be battered by noise in our homes or yards, evenings, Sundays, and holidays. Council asks that you restore our noise ordinances, make them concise, understandable, and enforceable by non-scientists. Limit the exemptions and limit the noise hours so that our right to reasonable use and enjoyment of our homes is protected. This will make Bellevue a more livable city. If you need any help, feel free to call me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Motz.
Any of them?
Good evening, council members and city staff. My name is Tim Motz, and I come to you not only as a homeowner here in Bellevue, but the proud father of three boys who live and reside in the community and these amazing teen leaders here that we have with us tonight. So we have both Leila and Sophia, who lead our teen leadership programs and are just the best, and so they're here to support tonight. We're also here on behalf of the 16,300 youth that have walked through the doors of one of our 18 locations in Bellevue over this past year. We are asking the city council to allocate more human service funding from the Human Services Department towards the future of our community, which is our youth. Simply put, funds allocated to programs like the Boys and Girls Club have proven time and time again to reduce juvenile crime, youth incarceration, and the cycles of poverty that are so often associated with generational homelessness. The Boys and Girls Club heard the call from you amazing council members and city staff, our school district leaders, and the residents of Bellevue to respond to the growing childcare crisis. And we did so emphatically over the past few years by investing $3 million in the Lake Hills community into our newest clubhouse. 14 of our 18 locations now reside in the Lake Hills community in the Lake Hills corridor. As the largest single provider of childcare and after-school services in Bellevue, it is vital that the City of Bellevue partners with us to continue the life-changing work for our families who need us most in the community. While 24% of Bellevue School District children receive free and reduced lunch, over 55% of our club kids in the Lake Hills corridor currently qualify due to their family circumstances. The explosion of need due to increased cost of living in Bellevue has meant that we have gone from giving out $900,000 in scholarships prior to the pandemic to over $2.5 million this year. We are partnering with individuals, foundations, companies, the state of Washington, and King County to help close this gap, but we truly need the City of Bellevue to partner with us in that same space as we work to serve all of these incredible members. Currently, the City of Bellevue's Human Services Commission is recommending a slight reduction in funds for the club this budget year, despite the fact that the number of needy families that we have served has nearly tripled since the last budget approval cycle. As you know, five priorities of funding have been identified by the commission, and the club plays a vital role in each and every one of these areas. Thousands of our club kids in Bellevue are experiencing hunger that we feed daily. Hundreds of our kids are experiencing homelessness, and we welcome them into our clubs and make sure they get back to their shelters in the evening. We're spending more money than ever on mental health support staff, and of course, we want to make sure that our workforce and sports programs are happening every single day so that we can avoid some of those issues. For us, the math is super simple. It takes approximately $90,000 a year to serve a child who is incarcerated. It takes $5,000 to $6,000 a year to serve a kid in a local Boys and Girls Club. For us, we want to partner with all of you to make sure that that number remains
Mr. Motz.
as low as possible.
Unfortunately, our time is up.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Christina Mendietta.
Chair Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and members of the council, good evening. My name is Christina Mendietta. I am the Director of Public Affairs at Kindering. We are a nonprofit that is headquartered in Bellevue, and we have been serving children with disabilities and other needs for the past 60 years and for many of those years in partnership with the City of Bellevue. So thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of our funding request for four of our programs. All of these programs are offered at no cost to participants and are currently supporting Bellevue residents and childcare providers. So I'm going to limit my remarks tonight to just describing those four programs. So first, Child Care and Preschool Consultation, or CCPC. CCPC uses onsite classroom observation, consultation, coaching, and training to help childcare and preschool providers meet the needs of children in their care. As many of us know, statistics show that children of color and children with disabilities are disproportionately at risk of being expelled from childcare and preschool. In 2023, our CCPC program served 229 children, the majority of whom were Black, Indigenous, and people of color, and 60% of whom were referred for developmental evaluation. As an important indicator of the program's success, 97% of the children served were retained in their original childcare setting. Second is Families in Transition, or FIT. FIT supports the needs of young children experiencing homelessness and their families through pediatric therapies, early education, parent coaching, outreach, case management, and connection to resources. A staggering 75% of children experiencing homelessness have had or have one or more major developmental delays. Last year, 89% of children involved in FIT programming made measurable improvement in their development. Third, Parent-Child Plus, or PC+. Parent-Child Plus is a school readiness program, home visiting program for low-income families with young children. Nationwide, PC+ graduates score higher than their peers on a number of important indicators, including school readiness, social-emotional development, and high school graduation rates. Of the families we served last year, nearly 100% identified as Black, Indigenous, and people of color, and most were making less than 30% average median income. And 40% of the children we served had identified developmental delays. Kindering is also the Eastside's sole remaining PC+ provider. Fourth and final is parent education and family support. This program offers evidence-based, culturally respectful guidance for caregivers of young children through group classes, customized programs, and one-on-one coaching. Surveys have shown that over 90% of parents reported significant improvements in knowledge and parenting skills in that program. In 2023, most participants, 65%, identified as people of color, and 68% of those who chose to disclose were very low to moderate income. We respectfully ask the city to consider supporting these programs once again, which have been making a positive impact on the lives of children, families, and childcare providers in the City of Bellevue. Thank you again for this opportunity to provide public comment.
Thank you. Our final preregistered speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihail, my dirty damn Nazi Gestapo antisemit fascist junta. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I lived in Bellevue almost for 40 years. And for 30 years, I come to council chamber almost every meeting here. So how intelligent, one from most intelligent and rich city in America, can come to Nazi Gestapo antisemite rules, what a city have? Who's this council? Who did this? And I explain to you right now my opinion. Because I spoke from Tacoma to Everett, more than 4,500 times to dozen cities. You, council, make Bellevue a unique city. I give you classic example. Nobody have rules like you have, 30 minute, 10 people with correction inside. You did this 12 years ago. If all 12 years ago, 150,000 idiots who live in this city accept this. Council, you acting like a bandito, like a Nazi. This is exactly who you are. So how we can change this right now? We have two possibility. What is I see right now? First, we can go to court and approve, so this is not legal, because many circle, nine, 10, 4, make decision about this. You can limit eight people freedom of speech. And second, what is I personal can do in behalf of 150,000 people, while I live for 40 years? I, right now, give my opinion because I want go to council chamber, to console election 2025 like a council member. I declare this now.
Okay, you cannot be talking about political things.
What? It's all political. This life not exist without political.
You can't talk about campaigns.
I don't talking about campaign.
That's what I'm hearing.
No, I don't talking about campaign. I declare my campaign, 25 District 6 against you, Robinson.
Okay, you cannot talk about campaigns here in council chambers.
It's not campaign.
Yes, you are. Okay, I'm warning you. That's one warning. Let's move on with your public comment, please. Don't discuss campaigns.
I don't discuss campaign. Tomorrow, I will discuss my campaign. But today, when I declare against you, this it, I cannot doing this alone. So right now, every time what is you interrupt me, I will qualify like a hate harassment and antisemitism. We'd complain to everybody who I can. Right now is a complaint about 2025 election. Right now, I'm.
That is the end of our preregistered list of speakers. We do have a few minutes remaining in oral communications. I would ask at this point, if there's anyone joining us here in council chambers who would like to make a comment to the council, please raise your hand. That includes those online. Please use the raise hand function. Okay, Mayor, I don't see any additional hands. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Next up, we have the consent calendar. Is there a motion to pass the consent calendar?
I move to pass the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a public hearing tonight. I'm going to have, is staff going to present? I don't know. Yeah, okay, assumed they were. We'll have staff present on this. Yes, we have Lauren and Kim presenting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So the subject of the public hearing is a resolution, a proposed resolution that would authorize the execution of documents necessary to remove residential restrictive covenants on a city-owned property in Woodridge, in the Woodridge neighborhood. And before council considers opening the public hearing, we'd like to have staff give you a brief presentation to explain the situation. And to do that, we have Lauren Matlick, our Real Property Division Manager, and also Kim Bowie, our Parks Property Acquisition Manager. And with that, I will turn it over to Lauren to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Cross. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Our staff report this evening is on a request that council support the removal of restricted, excuse me, restrictive covenants from a property in the Woodridge neighborhood that the city purchased in 2021 in response to community interest and with the intent of creating a neighborhood trail connection to East Trail. State law requires a city to provide notice and hold a public hearing for the removal of any restrictive covenants from a property owned by the city. of any restrictive covenants from a property owned by the city. Additionally, modifications to these covenants require a majority of the owners within the plat to agree to the change. Consistent with the law, our outreach to the community began in May of this year and included notices via US mail as well as in-person onsite events. Our outreach will continue until the released document is recorded. Our interaction continues with the community via this public hearing, the purpose of which is to allow the public an opportunity to comment on the request before the majority or greater than 50% of the approval level is reached. The city-owned property, shown here hatched blue, is situated within the Woodridge neighborhood at 12020 Southeast 11th Street and platted as Lot 19. The property is located along the western edge of the subdivision, which is highlighted gold, directly adjacent to East Trail, which abuts the property to the west and is ideally located for this neighborhood connection to the trail system. When this Woodridge addition, Division Number 3, was platted, a protective residential-only covenant was recorded to restrict the type of development allowed on lots within its boundaries. These covenants can only be changed with the majority consent of the 68 lot owners within the Division 3, of which the city represents a single parcel. While the council approved the 2021 acquisition of this parcel for public recreation and open space, including the connection to East Trail, and the land code does allow for it, the neighborhood restrictive covenants would need to be removed from the parcel in order to allow for the proposed use. The image on the left shows the parcel's current residential use, while the image on the right shows a concept of the neighborhood trail connection. Note that this is only a concept and is subject to change as design and planning continues. Following the public hearing, staff requests that council adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of documents consenting to the removal of the restrictive covenants. This will only apply to the single city-owned parcel, Lot 19 of the Woodridge Division Number 3, located at 12020 Southeast 11th Street. It should be clear that council's action tonight will not result in the removal of the restrictive covenants, but authorize the city to sign as one of 68 property owners within the Woodridge Number 3 plat in support of the removal. As of this evening, 23 of the 35 signatures needed to move forward with the covenant removal have been obtained. The city would be the 24th. This ends our staff report. We will be available to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. I was, I'm sorry, I was talking to the deputy mayor, and I didn't hear the end.
Oh.
Just tell me, are you going now to present?
I'm done. I'm just opening.
You are done.
Yep.
Okay. So, I was thinking we should hold the public hearing first and then ask questions if we have any.
That's fair.
Okay. So, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open a public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no speakers signed up for this public hearing, so in accordance with our normal procedures, I would ask if there's anyone who is attending the meeting tonight who would like to make comment during this public hearing, please raise your hand. That also includes those online. Please use the raise hand function. Okay, do not see any hands. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have staff here. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, I think I see Councilmember Stokes and Councilmember Lee. Go ahead, Councilmember Stokes.
Just for the record, I want to reveal, I live in Woodridge, but not in this grouping. I'm just down the street on that way, so I don't have any interest in, from this standpoint. Just want to get that out.
Okay.
Okay? Is there any question about that?
I think he's asking if he needs to recuse himself.
No, he's, we looked and he is not within the addition Number 3 and not a voting member in this.
Right.
So.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, good, thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question regarding the sequence of the process. I have no problem with the motion, or the subject of supporting, you know, the connection to the East Trail, and the purpose of having this action, because I think, you know, everybody, including council, can be giving you direction to do so. But I think there's a difference of opinion. I talked to the staff. We already taking the action to purchase a piece of property in this section. So, we were supported, and we have action that, you know, when the event that, when the timing is right, will make the connection. And it requires this action for the neighborhood, you know, to make it possible. So, but right now, we don't really have the neighborhood approval yet, right? You need to have majority. So, how many neighbors are involved? Thirty-five?
There are 68 total in the whole plat.
68?
Yes.
So, how many houses, how many homeowners approved it?
24.
24. So, you're not in the majority yet.
I apologize. It's, we need 35 majority. So far, we have 23.
Okay.
And then the city slot would be 24.
Right.
And then we will continue with outreach for that.
Right. So, you have yet to do the work. You still have to continue to do the outreach.
Correct.
Okay, so what I'm trying to say is, you know, where you're jumping the gun, you're putting the horse behind, not the car before the horse. You need to be doing the outreach, making sure that we get the majority approval. Then we can move forward.
Can you explain?
Right? So, I don't know why you didn't do that.
Can you explain what the impasse would be regardless of how we, even if we approve it tonight, if you do not get the signatures that you need?
We would continue to outreach, and then we would come back and see what, if we don't get enough signatures, then we will come back and see what we could do with the property. But the reason we're kind of doing two thing in conjunction is because the state law requires that we have, hold a public hearing before the action is finalized, right? So, it's either we, if we get everything kind of signed up, that the action's already sort of taken place, and, you know, holding public hearing is really, at this time, is like a balance, right? There's enough signature supported, people could still talk about it and have an opinion about the removal, and while we continue to get that going. So, it's sort of in-between process right now to kind of meet with the state requirement before an actual action take place.
And I'll add the ask from the, tonight's meeting would be to sign as a single property owner, along with the rest of the property owners. We would not be removing the covenants today. It would simply be signing as one representative member of this community.
And our next step would be, there have been neighbors who have been contacted, and they just.
What's been what?
There have been neighbors that have been contacted.
Right.
They've just been undecided on this and kind of seeing how things kind of pan out with the public hearing or other neighbors. So, we will follow up on those undecided and get that.
Do you need a public hearing for the city to approve it? The city, we're already, I assume we are signed it, we agree.
Can you explain again?
Right? If we're disagreed.
Councilmember Lee, do you understand what we're doing? Can you explain the purpose?
I don't understand what they're doing.
Yeah, I think.
So, state, the Washington State RCW has a requirement that any city-owned property that had a restrictive covenant, whether it's a city-enforced covenant or a private covenant, that the city would hold a public hearing so the public have an opportunity to comment on that removal of the covenant. It doesn't mean that the city has the power to remove it, it's just that a part of the state laws requiring that, because of past precedents where there's been cities who have, you know, removed covenant without the public knowledge.
But we're not approving or disapproving anything tonight. We're just, we, if we make a motion to pass this resolution, it would be to sign on as another signatory on this, as a party of interest.
Correct.
We could sign on as a signatory anyway.
No, not as a council, we cannot. We have to vote on it.
No, this, try again. The council has to have a public hearing in order to.
The council has to agree to sign this. The public hearing is a part of the covenant change to give the.
So, the two things.
We're doing it two first.
When is sign on? When is the covenant change? We're not ready for the covenant change yet.
Okay.
You're not going to get a covenant change.
We're going to explain it a third time to you. We are not voting for or against a covenant change tonight.
I understand that.
No, I don't think you do.
I do.
We're not voting on that.
I do.
We held a public hearing, and now we're talking about whether we want to make a motion to sign on as a signatory.
I'm questioning, why do we even hold the public hearing?
Because the state law requires us to hold a public hearing before we could remove any.
Before prove what?
So, to have a platform, the public to speak on a city-owned property proposing to release a covenant.
Well, read.
And then the action.
Public can speak anyway. They can speak to us anyway.
Councilmember Lee.
We have to have an outreach.
Your six minutes into your three-minute time limit. So, I'm going to catch you up here.
They're not answering my question.
And let you take it offline.
I've already taken offline.
You can talk to staff after the meeting as much as you need to.
I would like you to write this up clearly to explain to everyone, okay?
I think we all get it.
So that we can talk about.
Okay.
Can I have a quick comment before we go to the.
Is anybody else who needs to? Okay, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I love everything that you just talked about, and you showed me a graph that was the potential future, the two pictures. I know it is nothing on the stone, we don't even have a signature, but if you can do some community gardens there, I don't know, public art, something fun would be much better instead of just a path. So, just have that in mind, that we can make that much better than your graph.
Okay.
I am ready to make a motion.
So, now we're going to contemplate whether we want the city to sign on as a signatory on this, and you need 35 signatures. You have 24. We would be number 25.
You would be number 24.
But we will be 24, okay. So, is there a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 10411, authorizing the execution of documents necessary in support of the removal of restrictive residential covenants on a city-owned property known as Lot 19 of the Woodridge Division Number 3, located at 12020 Southeast 11th Street.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So, that passes, and we have two study session items. We're only an hour into our meeting. Shall we plow through? Everybody good with that? Okay. So, we have two study session items. Ms. Carlson, would you like to introduce them?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is an important study session night for you all, and a recognition of a great amount of work by staff and the Planning Commission and the community to bring you proposed comprehensive plan periodic update. And that's been two and a half years of work and community engagement and involvement, and it's the start of your conversation to consider approving those this fall. So, the update was stewarded by the Planning Commission, and it focuses on growth in downtown Wilverton, Bellred, and other mixed-use centers, in addition to accommodating the growth targets for Bellevue, and it meets the requirements of recently adopted state legislation. So, I am pleased to introduce the folks at the table today. So, we have the Chair of the Planning Commission, Creighton Gopel, as well as Director of Community Development, Emile King, and Tara Johnson, our Acting Planning Director, Kate Nessie, our Senior Planner. And with that, I will hand it over to Emile.
Thank you for the introduction, Acting City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Tonight is a big milestone for us. We are transmitting the work of the city's Planning Commission with the assistance of all of our other boards and commissions to the City Council for consideration. This process happens once every 10 years. We've spent the past two and a half years, based on council direction, working with the community, working with staff, working with the boards and commissions to come up with this recommended plan. This is a full update to our growth strategy. It builds off of the past successes we've had in our comprehensive plan and really sets us up for success over the coming decades. The transmittal tonight does focus on comprehensive plan policies. I do want to note that the land use code components will be initiated at future council meetings and then go through the Planning Commission and community engagement processes. So, tonight is policies, future meetings will be code. We have tonight and September 24 reserved as needed for council discussion on the comprehensive plan. We'll ultimately be asking for council consideration to direct staff to return with an ordinance. I do want to note the robust community engagement that has occurred over the past two and a half years. We had a public hearing this past summer with the Planning Commission. We did it over two meetings, so we could make sure we could accommodate everyone who wanted to give feedback. The comprehensive plan website has been kept up to date with identification of September as the date that this would come to council. I would also like to note that we have received some emails in the past couple days that have asked for greater notice of council consideration for adoption, and we want to take this to heart and work it into future efforts. Again, we are really interested in this continuing community engagement, and we welcome and appreciate all the community's continued input as the council considers this for potential adoption. So, we do have tonight and September 24 as council needs to discuss this and contemplate The agenda for tonight is we will begin our presentation by providing you with a process overview of what's happened to date. Creighton Gopel, our Planning Commission Chair, will then present the commission's recommendation and highlight some of the deliberation that occurred during that process. We'll then have staff review how the update incorporates state and regional planning requirements, and then we'll conclude by reviewing how the updated comprehensive plan responds to the charge from council back in February 2022. So, we'll go over that in detail.
So, we want to start off our presentation with just giving you a recap of the entire process. So, as Emile said, we launched this effort in February of '22, been actively working on the periodic update over the last two and a half years. We've had continuous community engagement throughout that time with members of the community, stakeholders, residents, and just other interested folks as well. We spent a lot of time gathering input, and they really provided us with insights and feedback, and they really formed the basis for what we're calling, what we called our growth concepts, that really led the stage to us developing alternatives or growth alternatives that we analyzed within the environmental impact statement. We would like to highlight, this update did include an EIS process, which was very extensive, not something we've done with the last couple updates, so that's very notable. It also set the stage for additional technical analysis, which we included in addition to the environmental analysis, and that really formed and provided some very important recommendations. So, we incorporated things like an economic analysis, an equity or racially disparate impacts analysis, and of course, ongoing community feedback through that EIS process. Through the draft EIS comment period, we received about 1,600 comments, which was really substantive, and we responded to a lot of those comments in the final EIS. We also incorporated some additional analysis upon discussion with City Council and the Planning Commission, so did some additional analysis relating to climate change and tree canopy, and that really led to development of our 20-year growth strategy, which is what's before you and part of the draft plan that you see this evening. It also provided insights, and we received a lot of feedback from the community about potential changes to both the land use map as well as policy changes, which are included in your draft plan. And now we're at the, kind of the final phase of this process. We, as Emile said, we held public hearings with the Planning Commission. We had several throughout this two and a half year period. We had several touch points with various boards and commissions who provided recommendations to the Planning Commission. And then ultimately, we're here this evening to transmit the Planning Commission's recommendation and start the council review process with potential action on the comprehensive plan before the end of the year. plan before the end of the year. So with that, I'm gonna turn things over to Chair Gopel, who is going to walk you through some of the planning commission's discussion and their recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and members of council. My name's Creighton Gopel, I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. Tonight I'm bringing forward the planning commission's recommendation to adopt the comprehensive plan periodic update. The planning commission is deeply engaged in the update, um, to the comprehensive plan as directed by the city code since the project was launched by the council in February of twenty-twenty-two, working closely with city staff and hearing extensive public testimony. I wanted to say here tonight that city staff did an excellent job throughout the process. You should be very proud of them. We did this together as a commission and like the public, we held a lot of diverse views, um, on the issues. We also did so with a full appreciation of the important and legacy impacts that our recommendations will have on the city of Bellevue today and also on the city that our children will inherit in the twenty-forties. And we held twenty-six meetings to study the issues, hear recommendations from other boards and commissions, and provide direction on the comp plan periodic update. Some of the updates I'd like to highlight are as follows. First, uh, the strategy for growth as articulated in land use policy LU one builds on the existing strategy by continuing to focus growth around transit and amenities while allowing for a wider diversity of housing types throughout the city. Second, the planning commission deliberated on the appropriate density in neighborhood centers, which was a focus of a number of comments during the public hearing. Third, the update to the community engagement element provides a stronger structure for consistent, ongoing, and meaningful dialogue with residents, business owners, and other stakeholders. Fourth, the housing element provides stronger support for planning, uh, for affordable housing and meeting the housing needs of households at all stages of life and income levels in Bellevue. Fifth, expanded policies for tree stewardship and retention in the climate and environment element, and more planning for the causes and impacts of climate change, um, are included throughout the plan. Sixth, we discussed the transportation commission's recommendation for updates to the transportation element and made changes to align with the city's overall growth strategy. And then seventh, and finally, we specifically reviewed policies for their impacts to racial equity and we, we believe our recommendations will result in fewer racially disparate impacts and may help to address some past injustices as well. And one thing that happened a few times during the, um, process that we went through was we had some skeptics come to our meetings and say, oh, this is way too complicated to deal with this plethora of issues, you know, that you have coming, uh, before you with the comp plan update and we should further extend the process. Well, I'm here today to tell you through our twenty-six meetings that we held, that we dived in deep into the issues, um, together with staff and also with the public. And we individually raised a number of issues that we wanted to go deeper on. And we also heard when the public came to us and said, hey, we want to spotlight these particular issues. I'll give you an example of just a couple of those. First, the commission grappled with the scope of future land use code designations. And in the, in the area of one in particular, the low-rise mixed-use designation, we ultimately opted to split that into two different land use designations, one which would be the mixed-use medium designation applicable to Kelsey Creek, Lake Hills Village, and Lakewood Village, and which would allow for potentially higher density with four to six stories. And the other would create a future land use designation, which would cover neighborhood business and community business zones, which would cover numerous other locations, including the Newport Hill Shopping Center. That was something that came up in the comments earlier from the public, uh, this evening. The commission also grappled with recommendations on the hotly debated issue of the circumstances under which vehicular traffic lanes can be replaced with lanes for active mobility. And I think we came up, um, together with an excellent compromise position, which doesn't rule it out, but also would set a high objective bar for doing so. And I'd refer the council to, um, TR fifty-seven in the materials. The commission is confident that our recommendation reflects the best interests of the community and is in alignment with council's vision for the city. The update meets the decision criteria in the city's code for amending the comprehensive plan. I'm a impatient optimist and I personally can't wait to see Bellevue's future. The planning commission held a public hearing that spanned two commission meetings on June twentieth and twenty-sixth, where forty-six people provided oral comment in addition to many written comments submitted. Following the public hearing, the planning commission voted unanimously on July tenth to recommend this update to the council. Together with staff, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, from the council. Thank you.
We, we wanted to also, um, just highlight some of the alignments with, um, state legislation. So as Emile said, of course, we're mandated under state law to update the comprehensive plan. Used to be eight years, it's now every ten years. But there's other state legislation that really informed a number of changes that we made to the plan. So I'm just gonna highlight them briefly for you. Under House Bill twelve twenty, which was actually passed a couple of years ago, um, cities and jurisdictions are required to plan for and accommodate affordable housing need for all income levels within the city. So that's something we looked at. We're also, uh, as part of our analysis, we also did a racially disparate impacts analysis, which identifies any existing policies that may need to be modified, um, that have led to any kind of inequity. So we've addressed those as well. A lot of those reside in the housing element, um, as well as recommendations for new policies that address, uh, anti-displacement or, uh, have led to inequity. So we've added a number of new policies within the housing element that speak to some of those issues. Some of the other, uh, relevant legislation, we have the middle housing, of course, um, that's been heavily, uh, discussed under eleven-ten, as well as the ADU legislation under thirteen-thirty-seven. So we analyzed some of those impacts under the final EIS and what that additional capacity would look like. In addition, we also have policy direction in our comprehensive plan, uh, that sets the stage to allow, uh, middle housing as well as, uh, detached ADUs, uh, within the city. And there'll be, as Emile said, forthcoming land use code work that will occur over the next many months leading into next year that will implement some of these changes. There's also the climate change legislation, um, which is required, uh, in terms of compliance in twenty-twenty-nine. We've addressed some of the requirements, some of the higher-level requirements, but we're still waiting for guidance from Commerce. So we'll have additional analysis and updates to the comprehensive plan to allow, align with this legislation in the future. We also had, um, some changes to, under House Bill seventeen-seventy-seven, which requires coordination with the tribes. And we did extensive outreach, uh, connecting with the tribes. They made some recommendations, which we've also included, um, into the comprehensive plan, so made some policy changes to align with their, with their requests. In addition, um, our plan also aligns with regional direction. So we have PSRC's Vision Twenty-Fifty, uh, which through the multi-county planning policies provides direction on how we plan for this additional growth over the next twenty years. Also provides direction for counties, um, in terms of growth targets and, uh, direction relating to countywide planning policies. And so our policy updates really align with, uh, both the multi-county planning policies as well as the countywide planning policies. Both sets of, um, regional direction really focus on three key areas, which also aligns with council's scope at launch, relating to an emphasis on equity, climate change and sustainability, and housing. And that was really the framework that the planning commission used as well when making their recommendations. We also did a lot of planning, as has been reflected by Chair Gopel's comments, around, um, centers, so, uh, continuing our vision and tradition for planning around regional growth center, which is downtown Bellevue. Be also, something that's new with this update is planning, uh, planning for countywide centers. That's something new that came about as part of this recent countywide planning policy change. And we have five designated countywide centers, portions of Bellred, Eastman and Wilberton, Crossroads, Factoria, and Eastgate. And then additionally, PSRC did provide us with, with an initial review and feedback and made some recommendations on policy changes we should include within the comprehensive plan. And we've incorporated their changes as well and which would, uh, lead to, uh, a more straightforward and easier certification process, which is the next step post, um, comp plan action and adoption. So we also wanted to touch on some of the additional changes that we made. We talked about, uh, state law and some of the regional direction. But we also heard a lot from the community about key priorities and issues that are very important to them. And so along those lines, we heard a lot about, um, love for this Bellevue city in a park, uh, the need for more parks and open space and tree canopy, and expanding and enhancing tree canopy. So we've added more policy support for that issue. A lot of, uh, conversation and dialogue about housing affordability and the high cost of housing. So housing element really reflects some of those changes. And of course, transportation and mobility access, as well as climate change and sustainability. So a lot of policy support around all of those areas and, um, happy to go into more detail if council has questions. And with that, I'm gonna turn things over to Kate to walk us through the rest of the presentation.
At launch, council identified nine items, um, as part of the scope. So I'm going to go through those nine items and, um, identify, uh, how this update meets the, the scope that council set at launch. The first item is consistent and equitable outreach. Throughout the past two and a half years, we've engaged with over seven thousand unique individuals through, uh, in-person community events, through, um, the, the website, online engagement, um, and, uh, other ways. About forty-six percent of those events were targeted at historically underrepresented, um, people in the city, um, uh, to make sure that we included everybody and all views in our update. The engagement report is available online and, um, the link is in your packet. The second item is the council directed us to plan for growth. This update, uh, builds on the current vision for growth in Bellevue by directing most of the growth into the, um, uh, centers, the growth centers in Bellevue, and in particular, the downtown regional center. It also reflects the, um, uh, the priorities of the community and especially the, um, the feedback that we heard from the community about increasing the housing options in Bellevue and focusing growth around transit. The third, um, item in the scope was to update the policies in the comprehensive plan. And this was really a one-city effort. All of the departments, people from all of the departments in the city were, um, involved in this effort. And it was informed by, um, the EIS, as Tara mentioned, and, uh, numerous reports and analyses. It furthers the community priorities that we heard very loud and clear, um, particularly around, um, increasing housing options and homeownership opportunities, preserving and enhancing the tree canopy, and providing convenient access to businesses throughout the city. It was guided by the planning commission, who heard, um, recommendations from all of the other boards and commissions. Even boards and commissions that were not, um, making a recommendation to council did provide feedback in their sphere of expertise. The fourth item is to, was to update the future land use map. The update to the land use map, uh, accommodates the job growth and the housing unit growth that, um, targets that we have, um, that council directed us to accommodate. And most of that growth, about eighty percent of both the job and the housing growth, will, um, happen in downtown Wilberton and Bellred. So really directing that growth to our centers. This was studied in the EIS, um, where we studied both the capacity and we also looked at, um, our expected growth target. So it's the expected growth for twenty-twenty, twenty-forty-four. The fifth item was to amend the land use categories, um, to use broader categories that grouped similar styles, similar building styles together. And, uh, one of the innovations, um, in this area is that we added, um, illustrations to show what that building style would look like. So for example, um, these two, um, comprehensive plan land use categories, low-rise mixed-use one would include the zones, community business and neighborhood business. Those have a similar development style of two to four stories. There are differences between those two zones, but they have kind of a similar look and feel. And low-rise two, um, which is more in the four to six-story range and, um, has, uh, a somewhat different, uh, look and feel. So for example, there's a illustration for a low scale and density, what is meant by a low scale and density. And, uh, low-rise two would be at the higher end of that and low-rise one would be at the lower end of that. There are many, uh, things that we need to do to, um, implement this, um, all of these changes. And, um, that will follow on with our, uh, with land use code amendments, um, such as the Next Right Work, uh, item, um, that is looking at mixed-use centers and ways to add, um, uh, more residential in those mixed-use areas. And it will also include, um, some legislative rezones to implement the, uh, comprehensive plan land uses. The sixth item is to manage the growth in the centers. And, uh, we have one regional center downtown, um, and we have five candidate countywide centers. We applied for the candidacy. Once the comprehensive plan is adopted, we can apply for, um, recognition, full recognition of those, uh, countywide centers. And we also have numerous, uh, local centers that in Bellevue we call neighborhood centers that are, uh, focus of small businesses and, um, those businesses that meet our everyday needs. The seventh item is to address housing needs. And many of the changes were directed in, uh, changes to the Growth Management Act through HB twelve-twenty. The major updates to the, um, housing element are, um, policies to minimize displacement, to repair racially disparate impacts, um, to provide opportunities for housing at all income levels, um, to support housing for those with the lowest income, uh, incomes in Bellevue, and to prevent homelessness. The eighth item was to address racially disparate impacts in, um, uh, compliance with, um, the new legislation in, uh, HB twelve-twenty. And, uh, to do this, we, um, documented, uh, uh, the legacy of actions through the racially disparate impact analysis. And we identified many policies that could potentially have racially disparate impacts and, um, and then made changes to those to, um, increase their, um, make them more equitable. Those policies were primarily in housing, land use, and urban design and the arts. And finally, the ninth item was to address climate change. This also stems from, uh, not only Bellevue's commitment to, um, uh, to the environment, but also from, um, changes to the Growth Management Act, um, through, uh, House Bill eleven-eighty-one. As Tara mentioned, we have taken steps. There may be additional changes that will need to be made, but we, um, expanded the environment element to include climate and environment, and we added the two required subsections. And now I will turn it over to Emile.
Yep. Uh, mayor, we, uh, have completed our presentation and staff and Chair Gipel are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, wonderful. And this is about the policies, the land use code work will come later.
Correct.
Okay. Let's start with Deputy Mayor Malakutian, who was on the planning commission and then served as Chair of the planning commission before becoming the liaison to the planning commission.
Thank you, mayor. This is such an amazing milestone and if we were in any corporate setting, we should have champagne. have champagne all over us. This is that moment, but we are in the government setting, so we cannot do that. I would like to take a moment to truly recognize the amazing effort that goes into updating the comprehensive plan. This update, as mentioned, lays a strong visionary policy foundation that will guide our city all the way through 2044. A solid framework like this is critical to ensuring that future land use changes and implementation efforts are grounded in thoughtful and long-term plan. This update is one of the most significant revisions to Bellevue's comprehensive plan since the Growth Management Act came into play in 1991. I was 11 years old. The scope of work behind this update is truly incredible and reflects the dedication, engagement, and collaboration of so many, from staff, from this body, boards, and commission, to the broader Bellevue community. Since the council launched this process in February 2022, and Chair, I was one of those people who was intimidated by the complexity at 2022. And over the course of 30 months, we have hosted 78 community events, in addition to many, many surveys and online opportunities for input. That's an average of more than one sort of outreach effort every other week. As we saw in the slide, over 7,000 unique individuals participated, providing invaluable input and helping to shape this vision for Bellevue's future. A special thank you to our beloved Chair Gopel for bringing forward the final recommendation tonight. You, along the entire commission, has put in significant time and care into listening to the community and refining this plan over and over. The Planning Commission alone has held 26 meetings to dive deep into this update, while other city boards and commission also held multiple meetings to review and contribute to areas within their expertise. I also wanted to thank staff. You are the one that make that humongous, complex thing on Comp Plan make it very simple for me, for Planning Commissioner, for our stakeholders. Your incredible work stewarding this update is remarkable. The Community Development Department has done an outstanding job managing this project with contribution from every city department, reviewing policies, updating information, creating graphics and maps, and presenting to boards, commissions, and the community. It has been a true collective effort. Our planning process has not gone unnoticed. Thank God, the city was recently honored by the Puget Sound Regional Council with a Vision 2050 Award for our excellent community outreach. And we also received recognition from our Planning for Housing Guide, which sparked important conversations around housing choices in Bellevue. Together, we are building the future of Bellevue, and like Commissioner Gopel, I couldn't be more excited about what's to come. After celebrating this milestone, we need to dive deep into the land use code work. Although I don't have any concerns or need additional information, but I am okay to direct staff to prep the ordinance for already big session in September 24 meeting, because we can have also more public to come and express their opinion. That's my remark, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure who else it is to thank, but, but thank you. I want to echo the Deputy Mayor for all the great work that not only staff has done, but also the commission as well. Thank you, Chair Gopel, for your comments and all the great work. You know, two and a half years, it's a long time, but obviously, the importance around this is worthy of that effort. And as difficult or challenging or as complicated as it may be at times, certainly, that effort is worthwhile. So thank you all for your diligent and thoughtful, very thoughtful work. Couple of comments/questions from me. One, as you noted, Emile, I think some residents were a little bit caught off guard that it was coming this early back to council for direction tonight. In fact, you know, maybe that is one gap is, I know it's a city manager office, you know, priority to, you know, to that. And you've done fantastic engagement work, and this is no criticism whatsoever. I think that, since it is coming forward for direction, I think residents deserve a little bit more time to review it, because unfortunately, the way it works right now, it's published Thursday night, Friday morning, and then residents are scrambling to take it all in before being able to provide feedback. So I think, not in all cases is it necessary for us to do that, but in the case like this, maybe, you know, a two-week notice before something this big and this complex, you know, we take direction on it. I think residents and major stakeholders deserve that courtesy for a little bit more time to provide some, so as some folks have mentioned, I would be in favor of not taking direction tonight and giving folks a little extra time that they feel they need to get comfortable with this and ask any other additional questions. How that looks is completely up to you, but I think taking that next step would be really great. Would love to get your thoughts on one of our comments during oral communications tonight about the Eastgate I-90 project and how you see that from your perspective. We did have that comment, so would love to get a better sense of that. And then I also had a question regarding transportation. I appreciate you bringing that up, and it's something near to my heart as liaison to the Transportation Commission. And if this is getting too much in the weeds, or we should save it to Luca, let me know. But, you know, with the tremendous growth, it's going to have a significant impact, obviously, to our transportation infrastructure, you know, and principle amongst those are some of these intersections that might not be able to handle that capacity. Right now, there's at least 13 intersections that will be failing unless we take some dramatic action here pretty soon. So how does that work itself into the comprehensive plan? Was that part, I mean, I heard, you know, other comments on TR57, which is great and important, but I want to understand that a little bit more from your perspective. And then the other one is energy, specifically electricity. You know, the state has mandated PSC to shut down the coal plants there. At the same time, we're seeing tremendous growth, not only from, you know, residents or multifamily, especially if we hit these target goals, but also from businesses. The state has also directed us to eliminate natural gas. At the same time, we're seeing more EV mandates coming forward, and EV vehicles becoming, or electric vehicles becoming more popular, so we're going to have to have more charging stations. While the amount of electricity is going down, how are we going to grapple with that with that issue as this kind of comes to a head? How are we going to be able to electrify our city as we continue to move forward? So I'll stop there with those questions. Thank you so much.
Sure. So we have Eastgate. So would Tara or Kate, do you want to go into some detail on the Eastgate changes that we're looking out, looking at out there?
Sure. So I'm not sure of the exact property that the commenter was referring to, so I can't speak to that particular property. Around Eastgate, because it's one of our growth centers, that was an area that was identified that could potentially have more density in that area. It's close to transit, both the existing park and ride that will at some point become a light rail station, we hope. And so I'm not sure exactly what the changes were on the property that they were interested in, but that was an area that we did identify as an area of growth.
And what we could do on that one, Councilmember Noonhouse, is note down and put additional material if we do come back at the next meeting, which it sounds like there might be interest in using that September 24th date. We're also taking notes of where we can give you and the community more details on some of the questions you may have. On transportation, that was definitely a point of discussion leading into the public hearing. So we had folks who were looking at these growth numbers and thinking about how we can retain good mobility in the city. The policy discussion did sort its way out in a way where everybody was happy with the Comp Plan policy, as Chair Gippel mentioned. The next major effort for transportation is really the Transportation Facility Plan effort that does go through the Transportation Commission. So that's the effort where we look at the, you know, the next number of years of growth, get some detailed modeling of that, and then really figure out what type of improvements are needed across all modes to accommodate that growth. So that's, that really is a focus of the city on as we grow and having a methodical approach of looking at what improvements are going to match up with those growth needs. Relating to energy, so we worked with PSC to review both the environmental impact statement document, it had a lot of technical analysis in it, as well as collaborated on the actual policies in the plan. So from a high-level policy standpoint, staff and PSC are comfortable with the growth, the overall growth plan. That being said, there's a lot of work that is still needed on an ongoing basis, really a yearly basis, to continue to work with PSC on what type of growth is happening, where it's happening in the city, and how their planning does match up with that. So for example, we do have annual meetings with PSC, where we kind of, they share how they're doing on some of their work, how different rules and regulations are playing into things, the preferences, and even mandates about what happened relating to things like electrification or natural gas. So that, again, is an iterative process where the city does work closely with PSC on how to provide that right amount of electricity for the city.
And I appreciate that, but when, at this moment, right now, right, during this past summer, there were multiple times where PSC is asking us to cut back on our electricity use. Now, that's before 30,000 additional households come into this city. So I know the conversations are happening, but I just want to elevate that. That is a real concern now and going forward, that we're going to be able to handle that capacity, so.
Yeah, we can, there's meetings coming up this September with PSC, and we can work with the city manager's office on how to relay the important findings from those meetings and give a summary, both to the CMO and to council, on how we're doing with that coordination with the utility provider.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I heard you ask Councilmember Noonhouse is that council consider delaying the direction to staff for the September 24th meeting, so that the public has a little more time to weigh in. So if anybody has a for or against that, if they could say that in their comments, I'd appreciate it. I'm going to go next because I have some questions that might influence the conversation a little bit. Chair, thank you so much for all your work and your leadership and for being here tonight. And I wanted to ask, when the Crossroads Shopping Center zoning heights increased, when you chose to do that for that property as opposed to the rest of the area, is, does that include the mall, where the mall is? And I guess my concern is if we blanket, allow the increased height and development, is that going to encourage somebody to come in and buy it and tear down the mall and build something else, because I would hate that to happen.
I'll start and then turn it over to city staff to supplement and correct any mistakes I may make here. But the height issue in relation to Crossroads was actually one of the last things that we concluded on, because we were very close on it, actually. We had a number of meetings where we were tied 3-3 on this topic, and finally, one where we had all of the commissioners present, and it was a 4-3 vote, because some of us, were concerned about the further increase in density associated with Crossroads, and others were intrigued by the idea of having additional density for Crossroads. I think for, you know, for those who were more interested in the, in the higher density for Crossroads, I think they saw opportunities in terms of maybe more affordable housing, also maybe a little bit more of a urban feel for the neighborhood. For those of us who had concerns about it, you know, the concerns stem from the fact that, you know, unlike a lot of the other areas within the city like Wilberton and in Belred, where we're increasing the density and you have that proximity to light rail, the traffic in the Crossroads area, although served by, you know, by rapid buses, you know, it's not quite the same infrastructure and the same location. So it was a close call, and the interesting thing was in the, in the last meeting in early July, when we did make a decision on it, the, somebody representing the owner of the property actually came in and proposed a kind of, I don't want to say it's like a wedding cake type of plan when it comes to the height for the location, which means that it's lower on two sides, but higher in the center in order to try and reduce potential impacts on the surrounding areas. So I'd say it was a close question at the Planning Commission, and I'll turn it over to staff to supplement.
I concur. I think Chair Gopel very accurately represented the discussion. We had to delay, we had to bring the discussion back at a subsequent meeting, just because the commission was pretty divided on the issue, and there was a request from the owners of the Crossroads Mall site. They were the ones that, you know, attended the Planning Commission meeting and requested that change, to have the higher designation towards the center of the site. And as Chair Gopel alluded to, it definitely has that wedding cake typology.
Well, I'm not inclined to support that change in height, to be honest with you. And so I don't know about my colleagues, but I just wanted to put it out there early in the conversation, if somebody else wants to comment on that.
Do you have the graph that, is that proof that shows that, that the, because we don't, we didn't, the Planning Commission didn't suggest to increase zoning for the whole, it's just the center.
Just the center.
If you have that graph, I think would be great for us to see that, if you can bring that up, or is it really hard?
Yeah, at least for tonight, the technology wasn't cooperating to show that particular map, but if it turns out we are directed to come back on the 24th.
Doesn't actually matter to my interests on this, because I just, I don't want to encourage redevelopment of Crossroads Mall, to be honest with you, at this point, unless we get a proposal. I'd rather do a DEA on something like that and see what's being proposed. So that was my comment. So I will go to councilmembers on.
Thank you. Well, I echo all of the accolades, so I guess I don't need to repeat that part. I mean, I know that it's been like taking a village of staff and community and Planning Commission. I was actually thinking that, I got on the Transportation Commission in 2013, and so got the half of that process, and I remember it not being nearly as robust and the kind of transformation that this particular one were looking at. In fact, I was realizing that, you know, that was pre-Amazon deciding that they wanted to have 25,000 jobs here and pre the kind of housing crisis that we're seeing today. So it was a completely different era for Bellevue than we're seeing today, and I just really appreciate all of the work to get us to this really thoughtful growth strategy of. strategy of where we target the growth and how we look holistically throughout the city. I had the opportunity to attend a number of the meetings and see the kind of engagement and all the different tools that were used to make that happen. So really appreciate that. I was going to comment that I also appreciate the fact that we got the tribal coordination as well as adding the climate and resilience section, even though it looks, sounds like we had till 2029 to do that. I love the fact that we got it done early. And my understanding is that there's a mid-five-year point where we take a look and see how things are going. And so that gives us a chance to test it out before we get to 2029. So just really thank you for doing that, that hard work. I appreciate the fact that PSRC has already taken a look and given us some some preliminary comments, because being on the Growth Management Policy Board, the certification has definitely been discussed and making sure that what we're seeing there appears to be in alignment with PSRC, I think is also really important. So that's another big kudos I want to give you. I do have, I would say, two questions. And I think one maybe goes to the mayor's question, but I'm going to ask my, actually, both of them go to the mayor's questions. One is that if we vote tonight for you to return with an ordinance, we can make a choice for that ordinance not to be on consent, which means that we actually would have a chance to consider any comments and make any final recommendations. Is that correct?
For something of this scale, we would come back on other ordinances, resolutions and motions, so it would not be on consent. We would do a short presentation for something of this magnitude.
Right, so then, so we could vote tonight for you to come back with an ordinance and still on the 24th. It'll be in other ordinances, so there's an opportunity for us to consider any other comments. I'm just checking.
Yeah, I believe the date.
Because that was what I asked, that was your question earlier.
Well, that was, Councilmember Newen House was, yeah, you're speaking to what his recommendation would be. It's either that we vote to move it forward and allow comments at the last meeting where you would vote it in, or we wait to vote to move it forward until we've heard the comments.
Yeah, typically on a other ordinances, resolution, motion, that's a short, very short presentation, probably not best practice to do a lot of changes on a night like that. If you wanted to learn more and talk about it, staff would recommend doing that at a study session, which we've reserved September 24th to have that happen.
Okay, so then, just for my clarity, if we chose that option you just brought up, we would have another briefing on the 24th, which means that the vote on the actual ordinance would be after the September 24th.
Yeah, and we would still be on schedule because we we allowed time for an additional new meeting, right?
Okay, just want to understand that. And then my other question was around anti-displacement policy. I know you brought it up. It was on the slide related to House Bill 1220, which was housing. My question was, do we have information in there about anti-displacement strategies and policies for businesses, which is, I believe, what the mayor is talking about of, you know, as we grow and have more height in areas, is there provisions in our comp plans so that we're also thoughtful about the existing small businesses that are on those properties as they redevelop into?
Just to be clear, that's not what I'm saying, but I do like what you're saying.
Okay.
But no, I'm, I don't want to lose them all at all.
Yeah, Kate, would you like to give some examples of the small?
Yeah, would you mind?
So this was something that was very important to the community as well. And there were two policies that were added to the economic development element, ED 46 and ED 47. They support businesses looking for space. And then that's ED 46. And we do have programs, existing programs in economic development that do support small businesses looking for space or businesses that may need to move to find new space. But ED 47 then takes a more proactive approach and looks for places where businesses may be displaced in the future and looks for strategies to help those businesses either stay in place or find another location that will work for them long term.
Okay, so it doesn't necessarily address kind of a phased type of development where they are able to stay in place longer? So it it really is more of a presuming that they get displaced, here are places they can go instead? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, so, yeah, ED 46 is is really more that. ED 47 is looking more at higher level, like doing some analysis, identifying areas and businesses that are at risk for displacement and and being able to intervene early on and doing some of the strategies that you just mentioned. So finding ways for them to to stay in place until the development happens or to like move within the development over as it's developing. All of those strategies would be things that could follow from ED 47.
Okay, well, that's really important. I mean, I, because for me, it isn't just any one location, it's a holistic thinking about, right, as we grow and existing buildings are transitioned or transformed, how do we think holistically about that? So thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Great, thanks, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Certainly agree with much of of what's been said. Definitely want to take a moment to acknowledge all the critically important input the community has provided in the creation of the draft of the plan that you presented tonight. I know some of these statistics have already been mentioned, but I think they're worth repeating. 7,000 individuals, 3,300 questionnaire responses, 78 events, and a statistically valid survey. Over two and a half years of dedicated effort is very much appreciated. I think our boards and commissions have also done a lot in support of the effort to help draft the update, and I think their efforts also are invaluable. Also, the Bellevue 2044 Strategy Team, and it's been mentioned, the Snoqualmie Tribe for their contributions. Chair Gopel really appreciate the the work that you've done, and it gets really tremendous, and all of your colleagues on the board. But to take all that information, synthesize it, and produce the the update is is really impressive. And I think you you've come up with a really top-notch product, so thank you. Our Emile, you and the gang, our acting city manager, too many people at the city to acknowledge, but really, really great work. And I know you've worked hard for quite a while here on this. So I think you've all done a really good job bringing to life the vision our community and this body have for our city. And out of the agenda memo, it was mentioned that council provided direction to continue Bellevue's legacy of well-managed growth that prioritizes a high quality of life and community building. Council also provided direction to integrate state, regional, and county requirements with the city council's vision for the city, community feedback, and guidance from city studies and plans. And, you know, you've done just that. I appreciate all the comments I've heard tonight. But I think two and a half years of hard work, lots of input, I am definitely ready to move this forward. I think what we have before us is really the document that is going to guide the city's growth. And I haven't looked at any other comprehensive plans, but just based on what I'm seeing, I mean, this is really, I think, what we need. So definitely in favor of moving this forward. So thank you.
Great. Councilmember Stokes.
Well, this has been a really good conversation. I think moving from September to, I mean, November or whatever to the next one is, it's, it's, I guess we have some time to spend, in a sense.
We do.
I mean, we're, we're ready to go. I think Dave and Dave Hamilton and Mo Malatutian have really put out, I think, what is the reality of this. And one thing we have to remember is that when we put this together, it's not done in stone, and we can't do something about that if it goes a different way. You know, it's, it's, but I think it's a, it's a great piece, and nothing is perfect. Things will change. But what I see in this is that, one, the community engagement has been going on very, very positive for a long time. And as you go back and you can see, as as Dave said, I mean, so many meetings, so many people coming down time and time again, it's a small group wants to go on now, and I understand, I mean, they have some particular things, and we can listen to that. But we can't stop the whole big change because somebody wants to do a small part of this. We need to work with them on that. And that we, we have to realize, again, we put this together, there is ways to, you you can change things in a way, there are things we can do on that. So I just think it's a very, very excellent bit of work for a long time. The commission, the staff, the council, the people, all four of these groups have been talking about this for some time, back and forth. And this is a very, very complex thing, and we're doing something that is moving Bellevue forward. And Bellevue is not a little towns out there kind of wanting to keep kind of being nice and going and worrying about things and all. We're, we're moving. And what I I see also is that, I mean, we can, things can always change, don't want to get into that, but we have to look at Bellevue of today and tomorrow, not a Bellevue of yesterday. In fact, yesterday, since the pandemic and things, things have changed and things have grown quickly. We went gone from 80,000 people to 150,000 people kind of overnight. And I think what we're working on is Bellevue is going to grow continuously, and we have a lot of places for that. And we have a lot of places to keep the things that we really like about Bellevue. So I think, I think we've all done a great job. I do want to emphasize that, you know, the really the Planning Commission, the council, the staff, the staff has given, how many meetings have we had where you've gone over this and we've gone deep dives on this? We've been working on this for some time. It's not just something we started yesterday and now we're kind of going on. And so we're at the place we need to move forward. You know, talking about crossroads as an example, I understand what the the mayor was saying, and, you know, it's nice to have that as it is now. But things could change very quickly out there, and you could have something even better. But, and you don't have to wait 10 years to 20 years to make a change because there are processes the way you can do that. So I I think we're in a good, good place with what we have done, what has been put together. Now, if we want to, you know, go another month and kind of talk about some of the things, I think that's okay. But I just think, I think we should give ourselves, all of us, a pat on the back because this is a tremendous change. And it's, it's like Bellevue has been doing. The reason Bellevue is the way it is today is because we do this, we work hard on this, we work together, and we do get community involvement. There are thousands of people have been talking about this. So it's, I think we're ready to go. I really appreciate the work. And what I also like is when you come and talk to us, and when you work on this, or we meet with you and have meetings and all, I know we're getting, we're not being told stories or anything, we're not being given, well, this is, we're doing this, and we're really not. We have great communications. And and as as you said, you know, at your committee meetings, I mean, you, there's back and forth, and it's a 4-3 vote sometimes and all of that. And we have put tremendous work into that. I think we're going to, we, we're doing what we really want to do on this. And so I'm, I'm ready to go for it. But if we want to take another, another week or two off, that's, that's okay, because it's not going to make that much difference in the end of the year. But I'm just really pleased with it, and I think, I think we've all done a very good job. This is, it's been interesting to watch just in all the time ago in council, but particularly lately, is the, the way that the staff, the commissions, and council, and neighborhoods, people in the neighborhood, and it's not just people who come down here all the time, it's all, we get all people in different ways here. There, we're all talking to each other, we're all working together on this. And we have disagreements and all, but I just, I think it's just amazing the way we put this together. And we don't need to mess around and and kind of make it less than what it is right now. So again, I just really appreciate what's been done, and I think we all should give ourselves on a pat of the back because I think we've done something for Bellevue and and for our, the people who live here and work here and and will in the future, that is just amazing.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Well, Bellevue is a great city. It's a great place to live. I have lived in Bellevue for 50, how many years? 56 years. And I have been on the council for 31 years, and I'm still here. I have not left yet. Most of the people who lived here are still living here because they are well-served, well-served by a staff, by good people, by people who volunteers, by people who are engaged in many, many different ways. And we are very fortunate as well because of all the people, all the technology, all the people recognizing this is a great place, where they want to call home. And I want to compliment, you know, the planning department, because most of the thing that makes Bellevue it is, is from you planning Bellevue, providing the infrastructures, right? The homes, the places, the facilities where people can call home. So this, what you've done, as big as the city has grown so much over the years, it's 150,000, but we are more like a 2 million people city. The economy, the things that we enjoy, you know, we've been traveled for all, all the country. Bellevue is amazing. Starting with, you know, downtown development, we developed downtown before it was nothing. It's just one street, Main Street, Bellevue Square. And now we developed the wedding cake idea. Not everybody agrees. A lot of people are not happy with it. And then it continued to grow, and we have all these neighborhood centers. Then Bellred Corridor was developed. That was a wonderful planning piece that many cities have never done that before. Most planning development are done by just planning, just housing. This transportation is a very integral part of development, but normally it's left out because, you know, you put your house down, put your buildings down, and then you put wherever you find a place independently, because it's done by business people, by residents. And the streets, transportation have to go around it. But we had a great opportunity for Bellred Corridor because we knew light rail is coming. And we developed, we know where the light rail is coming through. It's going right through Bellred Corridor from downtown Bellevue to Redmond, where the Microsoft offices. So it's well-planned, well-developed. But it's sat there for many years, you know, before we see anything. Now, Bellred Corridor is just beginning to bloom, right? To grow, that's what we're doing. We're planning for growth. But growth doesn't happen just because we flip our fingers. We are not a dictatorship that we want to develop something. It happens. We develop because we listen to the public, we listen to the reality, we listen to what happens economically, what supports us economically, not because we wish to be. What we can do, that's important. So I think now we are doing it for the next 25 years, and that's what we're planning to do. Okay, I always mention that planning is not so difficult. It takes diligence, the good work you guys are doing, it requires community input, because I just mentioned, it depends on what people want. People want to live, people want to do business, people want to educate their kids. But I would say the devil is in the detail. We cannot control the details. It happens when it happens. Like even today at the podium, if each of us want to say, I like something, I don't like something, we can spend the next two days talking about it. And that's going to all mess you up, right? We don't, we don't know. But that's where the planning is important. Planning has to do the best you can, given the information you have, give it the best estimate you've got. got, give it the best input you have from the public. You listen to them, because they are the ones that determine, the devils, okay? So it's important. So I think, we, I want to compliment the process you went through. I mean, you guys did a great job. I was briefed by you, right, just a week ago. I mean, I was completely happy, satisfied with what you've done. I mean, based on what you got. And listen to Chair Gappel, amazing what you guys have done. I mean, you, what you have said in your presentation, it was just so articulate. I mean, you, you could have sold the refrigerator to Eskimo. Well done, because you covered everything that should be covered. And the hard work you put in, and you identify all the elements, preparing for growth, preparing for all the things, climate change, transportation system, except the challenge, the devil is the, how are we coordinating with transportation? How are we coordinating with economic development? How are we coordinating with climate change? How coordinating all the other elements, which may not be under our control? And that's the challenge of the city council. We don't just handle one element. We depend on you giving us that expertise. We completely depend on you. And thank you for doing such a great job. But we need to also consider transportation. We need to consider economic development. We need to consider infrastructure, energy, all that stuff, right? That has to be all included. We, we need to consider all those stuff. So I'm not going to jump right to the conclusion, say, oh, this is it, wonderful. No, it isn't. But it's a wonderful foundation, wonderful element. We have to wrap it all together. That's why we have a wonderful city manager that can help us to bring all this together. That's why the city council member have to ask all the right questions and appreciate more, because he served diligently at the commission. He knows what he's looking at. He knows what the elements that's important. But Councilmember Newhouse, he asked, how does it relate to transportation? It's important. Somebody asked, how does it relate to Eastgate? That may not be necessarily housing, but it's whatever that may be. So I think we need to completely understand. We have no control over, you know, what's the element of the transportation system that might come in from Sun Transit or from, from Metro, right? But we need to understand what they are. We need to understand the unpredictability or variability. We need to have provisions for them. That's why I appreciate what you're saying. I, you know, just in conclusion, we need to listen more. We heard some people that are giving us some comments today. So I don't mind. This is such an important thing that we are facing. It's for our next 25 years, 2044, for our next, yeah, you know, we need to be careful, diligent, to, to make sure that we're here, and we respond to it, and they will work with us, they trust with us, because they're going to be here for the next 25 years. The children will be here. So you, I appreciate what you say. You're a impatient optimist. I, I believe the word I would like to be, I am a, a patient realist. As a council member, that's why I've been serving for 31 years. That's why I've lived in Bellevue for 58 years. I'm still going to live, continue to do so, because I'm a patient realist. So thank you. I hope that we can listen to the wise, wise saying, wise consideration of everybody on the council, without ignoring anybody that's giving us some ideas. And I, I appreciate the mayor said, we're not in a rush. We have, we have to have a realistic timeline. I mean, that's how we do business. It has to be business-like. But we got to be able to consider all those, so that when the devil happens, we know we can handle them. Otherwise, we'd be caught off-guard, because we have missed some of our partners somewhere that we depend on. So, good job. I'm willing to support this, but I absolutely support having more input, give them a little bit more time. They mentioned, well, it's a little bit short. Okay, give them a few more weeks, days, then we'll see what happens. Still, even after that, we still have to be realist, do the best we can, and hope for the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. So there's two notions on the table that I would like to actually vote on, and I will take motions. But I'm going to speak to my motion before I make it. I think Crossroads Mall is a community asset that serves one of our most diverse communities, and there's nothing else like it in Bellevue. And we have kind of master plans, I don't know, we wouldn't say that, but focus plans for Belred, for Eastgate, for Spring District, for downtown. We don't have that for Crossroads. And so, within, you know, the permitting of what's allowed, anything's possible. And we haven't put in a value system for what that community, what would best serve that community. I'm all for housing, but I would love to retain that third-place concept that Crossroads provides with the multicultural food and the, the stage. I mean, all those things are, are the only ones in Bellevue, and it's very popular. I, I'm all for change, but I would, since the planning commission was a little bit conflicted on it, on their recommendation of this, themselves, I, I would prefer to take that out of this recommendation. And if the developer, the owner of the property, wants to do something, if they come in with a development agreement that tells us what we're going to get, and we can work with them to try to retain some of the values that that property has now, I'd be all for it. But we haven't had that conversation. And just granting blanket increased heights does not guarantee what we're going to get, other than something higher. And, you know, permission to redevelop pretty easily. So I would like to move that we take the recommendation for the Crossroads Mall out of the comp plan update.
Go back to the original.
Or, yeah.
Just wanted to make a clarification question before we take that move.
Yeah, but let me just, deputy mayor is recommending that we go back to the original.
Yeah, that was.
Yes. The staff's recommendation versus the planning commission's recommendation?
Yeah, can you go over the recommendation?
Can you tell us what the staff's recommendation was?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. So our recommendation that we forwarded to the planning commission was to have mid-rise mixed use and on, on the entire site. And then the request that came forward from the property owners of the Crossroads Mall site was to have the interior designated as high-rise mixed use, which would be a higher height. And that was what the planning commission recommended. So having that multi-layer sort of approach, split zoning essentially, or split land use designations. So our initial recommendation was to have the mid-rise mixed use over the entire site. That's something council wants to consider.
And how, how high is mid-rise on that site?
So, again, that would be part of a luca, but mid-rise would be somewhere between seven and 10 stories.
Jeez, okay, so I'm not changing anything by going with staff recommendation. Ah, boy. I, I just, you, you can kind of hear what my goal is here. What is staff recommendation on how to proceed on something like that?
Well, our initial staff recommendation was that mid-rise mixed use, after we looked at that larger area. And as Chair Geppel mentioned, it was, you know, quite the discussion at the planning commission. If, if this council would like more information, I guess we're happy to bring back more information.
I'm just saying, how do you get the conversation to retain some of the values of the crossroad and the amenities of Crossroad Mall? And I'm sorry, I'll let you comment.
Oh, no, thank you. Well, this is part of the, the reason why I think we do need the additional two weeks as well, because the other question I had on top of this is actually about where does neighborhood planning fit into this as well? And Tara, maybe you want to speak to that. But, I mean, don't we want to go through that process before we actually look at what the finality of what this, what this looks like? Or what, what comes first? And then how does that impact what we're talking about right now?
Great question. So I was just going to raise that, as the mayor's reflected on some of, you know, some of your concerns about the increased height and density. So potentially, next week, we are bringing forward, you know, asking council for direction to start the neighborhood, start up the neighborhood area planning process, which was put on hold while we, while we went through the periodic update. But the two next neighborhoods that we're requesting for direction to start work on are Crossroads and Newport Hills. And so there will be a path for us to really look in more detail at a neighborhood-specific level about things like third places, gathering places, you know, places that are very important to the community through that effort.
So the question then is, does it make sense to move this forward in advance of the neighborhood area plans? Or do the, those specifics come more when you do the land use codes?
I would say both. So this is our overall proposed citywide land use map. We did look at adding additional capacity in some of our neighborhood centers. In addition, Crossroads plays another important role. It's also designated a countywide center, and Crossroads Mall is part of that site. So we're trying to look at opportunities to balance, you know, higher areas that have good access to transit, which, as Chair Gopel said, served by rapid ride right now, not that far from the Overlake Light Rail Station. And as I said, it's a countywide center, which is considered, you know, good balance of both jobs and housing and transportation access. So those are all key, key considerations. And we'll be going into a lot more detail as we start the neighborhood area planning process as to what that criteria is and what that looks like.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes, what?
Well, I'm sorry, I had my hand up first, but, so, I just, how many other things are going to be opened up on this? I mean, it sounds, if we just start saying, well...
Okay, I don't need a criticism over my desire to talk about this.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just...
Are you, do you feel for it or against it? You can speak to that, if you feel supportive or opposed to my recommendation that we take staff recommendation over the planning commission recommendation?
So my question is, what, I just, we could do that, but I, I just don't want to see us, and then we have the community coming back and saying, well, gee, it looks like you're making changes. Why don't we, we'd like to change this one. And then two weeks from now, we say, well, gee, we need more time. And the next thing we're doing, I'm just saying this is, you know, could happen, probably not, but next thing we're doing, we have four or five different things coming in and saying, hey, you're doing this for them, why can't you do it for us, kind of thing? And then where are we?
Councilmember Lee.
We mentioned, we talked about how much we appreciate both staff and the planning commission's work and recommendation. So, you know, I, I don't know why we are splitting here so much, even though, especially if we were to come back and have another chance to look at it anyway, sounded to me that's the case. I would be more inclined to accept the planning commission's recommendation, because I believe they really have really worked hard at it, dived into so many meetings. And they represent the community, they heard a lot of conversation, and therefore a real discussion among themselves. So I would prefer, if I were to make a choice, for the planning commission's recommendation. But I'm not locked in that, because we're going to hear some more conversation in the next, whenever, however. So what's the difference? So why, why do we have to split the hair right now?
Yes, Chair.
If I could just add one thing, I, I was just going to say, on, on that particular issue, like I said, I mean, we, we went rounded around at several meetings. I think both sides had very strong views. I mean, there were some who sided with staff and some who, you know, wanted more density for Crossroads. So I, at least from my perspective, it's, it's certainly an area where reasonable minds could very much differ on that point. So I, I think, I, I would, I, I think you should feel free to do whatever you think is best as a council on that, without regard to, you know, the feelings of any group, you know, be it staff or, or the commission.
So I'm going to ask for a motion to remove the planning commission's recommendation on the Crossroads Mall site, and revert back to the staff recommendation on that. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
If I say it that way?
Yeah, I moved a motion for the Crossroad Mall, the staff recommendation being approved, not the planning commission recommendation.
And if there's no second, we will not take a vote. Okay. So the other motion is, do we do this, we bring this?
Can I just make one comment?
No, we didn't second it, so there's nothing to comment on. If you want to second it, you can comment. Okay, so, ooh, gee. Okay, hopefully everything's okay out there. The other motion I'd like to hear is that we move direction to staff to the future meeting of September 24th.
I make the motion that this body direct the staff to prep these ordinance to adopt comprehensive plan for September 24th meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Hold on, hold on. Yes, go ahead.
So the way that was worded, I just want to make sure, because that was my question to Emile, if we vote yes, it means it's...
It's going to come back as other ordinance, which is a regular, quick adoption. So it would not be one where we are choosing not to vote tonight, so that we're actually coming back for one more briefing.
Correct.
And then, just want to make sure...
You know, that's a very good clarification, but it does give the community, what, two more weeks to weigh in with comments.
Right. But, but we would not, when it comes back as other ordinance, what I heard is, that would not be customarily a place where, if we hear comments and before the 24th, that we would be making any amendments, because that's normally when we're, it is, it is a vote of the ordinance as is. I'm just making sure I'm clear.
Well, I mean, I think that you could move it to something else, if somebody wanted to make a major change. You could move it back into the agenda for a full discussion. How about the city manager weigh in on this?
Yes, thank you. And I might ask Emile as well. So if the council wants to have opportunity to have discussion, and we built this into the original schedule, that you did not need to make the motion tonight, you could come back on the 24th, have more conversation, make the motion on the 24th to direct the development of the ordinances, and then the final adoption would be in October. So I'm going to ask Emile to confirm that.
Yeah, the game plan was to transmit tonight. If you would like more time, it would be on the 24th at a study session, so similar setup.
So it would actually be a discussion item?
And then we would vote at that point for you to come back in that first meeting in October?
Yeah, we had October pegged with, with appropriate council direction, clearly, to come back in October for the actual action to adopt.
And, and I will say that the advantage that might give you, and the staff frankly, is that you can give the final direction to develop those ordinances on the 24th, so it's clear, and we can develop those ordinances appropriately per your direction to adopt in October.
So that's what the motion is?
I mean, we, we don't need a motion.
Well, we do.
We don't need a motion. Just come back.
Oh, we don't?
No, we don't need a motion.
No, you do not need a motion to come back for the study session.
Well, actually, I, I wanted us to vote as a body, whether we wanted to do this or not. So unless I see everybody nod their heads, which I'm not necessarily sure I do, I do want a motion, so that we can vote on it.
What's the motion?
The motion.
I make a motion that...
I think, I think actually, maybe the motion will clarify it. I think we have a motion in a second already on the table.
We do.
If I'm not clear. But I want to be clear on what the motion is, as it's in the agenda. I agree with that. But I mean, we have put in... But I mean, we have put in so much time and effort, two and a half years. I think this thing is fully baked. I think Chair Geppel kind of talked about the round and round that they went through with Crossroads. And I think to Councilmember Stokes' point earlier, I think it's time to be done going around and round. I think what we have before us is really solid, it's really good work. So if this is the motion, I'm in favor of it. But this, to me, does not involve any further changes or anything substantial. This is voting on what's before us, and it's going to come back, and that's it.
Well, this is adding one more meeting of discussion. And I don't know, I mean, it says at a future meeting, and it doesn't really say whether we're going to bring it back and discuss it again or not. But I think the assumption is that it just, the next time we see it, we are going to vote it in. And what we're saying here is that we're going to give it another meeting, to give the direction we would have given tonight, which is to direct staff.
Mayor, I don't believe that was, that's the motion on the table, though.
Okay. What is the motion on the table? Can you reread it?
Yes. Reread my plain motion language. Basically, the motion is, instead of directing the staff to prep the ordinance tonight, we are going to ask the staff come back on September 24th, and on, in that meeting, we are going to direct the staff to prep the ordinance.
We have the option to direct staff.
Yeah. That's the motion.
Clarify.
A plus. Thank you. The lawyer's saying, I did a good job.
I need a clarification. What ordinance are we talking about?
The ordinance adopting the 24 comprehensive plan periodic update for council action.
As defined now, today, ordinance in front of us?
The proposal, the comp plan that the staff.
Yes, it has been proposed for tonight.
So whatever we discuss next meeting, if we want to make changes, that would be out of the question.
No, we, we'll give you a chance to make changes.
That's what he said. He said, come back the ordinance that we discussed today.
Come back.
Unless you say include any modifications.
No, no, no. There's not going to be any modifications made by staff. It would give us, as a council, a chance to listen to the community in case they didn't have a chance to weigh in as much as they wanted to, and we can recommend changes at the September 24th meeting if we choose to.
Right.
Or we can direct staff to return.
And vote on the ordinance with those changes that we approved.
Pardon?
And hold on the ordinance with those changes in that discussion.
Okay, let's not, let's, let's just.
Come on, that's what Diane just said.
Speak, I'm going to let Councilmember Newenhouse speak.
Thank you. My understanding that the ordinance would come after the September 24th meeting, Conrad, so we'll have, we'll have two weeks to both solicit and listen to additional resident and stakeholder input on this, as well as, 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 as council. Then, when we move it forward from there, then we would have the actual ordinance. So nothing, you know, the ordinance is not coming on the 24th, it'll come after the 24th.
Comes in October.
Yeah, in October, exactly right. And a quick question, Emile, just to clarify. The residents, did they see the final product that we're discussing tonight? Was the first time they saw that on Thursday, when we, when we published this packet? When they saw the final product that we're discussing tonight?
Yeah, final product was, was produced in the council packet, provided about 98% or 99% was at the planning commission process, but in the, in the final packet, Thursday was, was the day.
Thank you. Again, just to clarify, my, my interest in extending this two weeks, we've been dealing with this two and a half years, I think we can manage two more weeks. And again, to allow residents to see that final product, I do believe is, is important step for us to take, as much as I understand the, what was it, the impatient optimist realist, or I forget all the, the titles now. There you go, okay. But just want to underline and underscore that, I think two weeks is, is, is something that we can, we can afford to do. Thank you.
Well, Councilmember Newenhouse, I need to clarify something. Because what we're actually proposing is to put another meeting in between the final adoption. So it's not just giving it two weeks, it's actually voting to see this again on the 24th, in case we want to make any modifications. Okay, so just to clarify that.
I have a question.
I think Councilmember Stokes had a question or a comment.
So essentially, though, we're opening up any other thing we want to do differently than we've talked about tonight.
Yes, it would just be a repeat of tonight.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
And all for one, one thing, which could be, well, I don't want to argue about this, but.
Well, you can vote for or against it, that's.
But, but voting for or against it is kind of a reaction thing. We're supposed to be a collaborative body, and I'm just trying to, I'd like to have some conversation about this, understand what the impact could be on this, that I'm not, not in favor of coming back and having this conversation we had tonight all over again, I mean, it's a deja vu all over again.
Okay.
So, and I, I'd like to think about what your, your proposal is, but.
It's not my proposal, it's Councilmember Newenhouse's proposal. It's his motion. My motion did not get a second. So his motion is to add a second, another meeting on the 24th, to repeat what tonight is.
For what purpose?
To give the community more input time.
Okay. All right.
Councilmember Lee.
That's different.
I still have a question of, Councilmember Newenhouse's motion, I don't understand that. So I want to know if you understand it. Can you repeat what you understood in two weeks' time?
Yep, two weeks.
Bringing back a motion. Right?
In two weeks, we would come back, and in study session, we would have any additional council discussion. It would allow the community to look over the materials in more depth. And at the end of that meeting, we would have the council consider directing staff to return in October with an ordinance to adopt the comp plan.
For final adoption.
With, with, including any decision we made during that discussion?
On the 24th.
On the 24th.
Yep.
Okay. So that's clear. Not the original ordinance that you already had made. It's including all the additions that we discussed.
The possibility of that, we haven't discussed.
Right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Yes, Councilmembers on.
One last question, or I guess maybe my ask, if this motion does pass, we're going to get a very abridged presentation, right? We are, because, because what I, no, because what, what I heard is, we're going to have the whole regurgitation of tonight.
That is what it's supposed to be.
And that is not the case, is that correct? Because we're not going to walk through another 35 minutes of a presentation, because we have already gotten that. I'm just clarifying.
Well, I think your question is, what you're asking is, can we have it under other ordinances? Is that right? Or, or do you want to have it as a study session item, as is being proposed, with just a shorter presentation?
A shorter presentation.
Yeah, well, minimum viable product for the presentation and allow council discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Hamilton.
All right. Thank you. So I think originally, the, the plan was that we would have a study session tonight. If we felt like we were ready, we would take action tonight. If we were not ready, then Emile and the gang would come back on the 24th, and we'd have that time to do whatever we needed. And then at that time, we would take action. So do we even need a motion? Because to me, this has gotten so convoluted. If we want to just schedule another study session, wouldn't we just have a motion then?
We could do that. The reason I wanted to vote on it is unclear to me if everybody here wanted to add that extra meeting.
Thank you for that.
So I am asking, just for my clarity, to take a vote as to whether we want to add a September 24th study session onto this. And the action that you're referencing is actually just directing staff to return for the final approval in October.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay.
Can I have one comment as well?
Yes.
I, as I mentioned, I don't need any more session or a study session or anything about comp plan. I think it's great, I think we should pass it. But I think because we have done such an amazing public engagement and a stakeholder, and we have done a great job, I think giving another two weeks, because the full package was just released recently, and public did not, is a very complicated stuff, as you mentioned, so did not have time to fully read that, I think giving it two weeks and coming back is not a big deal, because I think it's such a big milestone, that we should do it perfectly without having any small, not being, any public not being happy about the process. So for that reason, although I personally don't need any other session, I am okay to just have September 24th with a small presentation, and we hear from public, and then we direct the staff to come back with an ordinance.
So we have a motion on the table, it has been seconded. Are we ready to take a vote?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Of adding an extra meeting on the 24th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Councilmember Stokes, how did you vote? Pardon?
I said aye.
I didn't hear you.
Okay.
Okay, so all seven oh. Okay, great, thank you very much. And with that, we will take a 10-minute break and come back at 10 till. Okay, thank you for waiting for us. So we have our second study session item. Ms. Carlson, would you like to introduce it?
Thank you, Mayor. So for this one, we are going to zoom in. You are at the broad level for the comprehensive plan amendments. This is going to the Bell Red Look Forward, so a component of that. We have swapped our senior planners, and we still have our planning commission chair, Geppel, and the staff, and they'll present the details of the proposed recommendation for the Bell Red Look Forward. And we have still at the table, Emile King, our planning director, or our community development director, and Tara, and we've been joined by Gwen Rousseau, our senior planner. And with that, I'll hand it over to Emile.
Thank you for the introduction, Acting City Manager Carlson, and good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Tonight is the transmittal of the planning commission's recommendation for the Bell Red Subarea Plan. The current subarea plan was adopted in 2009 and has guided significant development in new urban neighborhoods in the subarea. The Bell Red work was done in parallel with the overall work on the city's comprehensive plan. This transmittal tonight focuses on the Bell Red policy document. The land use code for Bell Red will be initiated in the coming months to go through the planning commission process and undertake community engagement. We have tonight, as well as September 24th, reserved as needed for council discussion. We'll ultimately be asking for a council to consider directing staff to return with an ordinance for adoption of the updated Bell Red Subarea Plan. The agenda for tonight is, we'll begin our presentation by providing you with background on the Bell Red Look Forward initiative, including the planning process to date. Creighton Geppel, our planning commission chair, will again present the commission's recommendation and highlight some of the deliberation, and will conclude by reviewing the key policy moves associated with the proposal, along with what we learned through the community engagement and environmental review.
So we wanted to start off the presentation, just provide you a little bit of context on the scope for the Bell Red update. As Emile said, it was done in conjunction with a periodic update, so the environmental review was done citywide, which included the Wilberton area as well, that council recently approved comprehensive plan amendments for. And as Acting City Manager Diane Carlson mentioned, this really, Bell Red is also a very integral piece to our overall growth strategy. And so we really took a citywide approach when looking at some of the changes within the Bell Red Subarea. When we first adopted the plan, which is now about 15 years ago, we were in between major comprehensive plan updates, and so there are a number of policies within the subarea plan that also reside in volume one. So we looked for opportunities for efficiency there, and really focused in on policy changes that were really, really applicable to the Bell Red Subarea and unique to the Bell Red Subarea. It, let's see. Just wanted to go over really briefly the timeline. So as I said, it's, it followed the comprehensive plan periodic update with a number of touchpoints. Community engagement was done in tandem, so it really was a good opportunity to explain how Bell Red fits into the citywide vision and growth strategy. Similar to the periodic update, Bell Red also underwent review with various boards and commissions, not to the extent that the comprehensive plan did, but also there were several policy areas that were presented to the Transportation Commission, the Parks Board, the Environmental Services Commission, and they in turn provided recommendations to the planning commission, who guided changes to the policies and the vision, and updates to the vision. There was also a public hearing held in June, and a recommendation that is being forwarded to you from the planning commission. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to, to, to the chair to walk us through the planning commission's recommendation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malacutian, and members of the council. Again, my name is Creighton Geppel, I'm chair of the planning commission, and as Act Two tonight, I'm bringing forward the planning commission's recommendation to adopt the Bell Red Look Forward Comprehensive Plan Amendment. The planning commission reviewed proposed updates to the Bell Red Subarea Plan and future land use designations as directed by city code during 11 meetings held over the course of a year and a half. And once again, I want to commend city staff for doing an excellent job, I think, during the whole process. Our review was informed by recommendations from the Transportation Commission, the Parks and Community Services Board, the Environmental Services Commission, and the Arts Commission, based on their expertise in their specific areas. Our review was also informed by a lot of community input that we received through staff summaries, written and oral community comments, and by public testimony given at the public hearing on the Bell Red Look Forward Comprehensive Plan Amendment held on June 20th. The planning commission provided feedback during our review on ways to strengthen and clarify, you know, many of the policies and on proposed future land use designations to ensure the recommended amendment reflects the best interests of the community. And updates in the recommended amendment, I'd like to highlight, include the following. First, it increases, the increases to development capacity around our light rail stations, especially for housing development. Second, new policies supporting the preservation of small local businesses, such as ethnic grocery stores along Northeast 20th Street. Third, new policies calling for flexibility when implementing local streets where site constraints exist, and, and an emphasis on creating connections for active transportation. Fourth, new policies supporting the Bell Red Arts District, securing affordable space for artists and arts and cultural organizations. And fifth, and finally, policies calling for regional stormwater facilities and cross-departmental collaboration on stream rehabilitation and restoration plans. After hearing public testimony from 12 speakers at our meeting on June 20th, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend the proposed amendments to the Bell Red Subarea Plan and comprehensive plan future land use map as shown in attachments A, B, and C in the council's packet. The planning commission is confident the recommended amendment reflects the best interests of the community, meets the decision criteria for amending the comprehensive plan, and that the updated subarea plan will serve as a valuable guide to inform the planning, design, and development of Bell Red going forward, enabling achievement of the Bell Red vision. I'm personally very excited about this, because, you know, having lived in Bellevue since the late 1990s, I've always viewed the Bell, I, I historically viewed the Bell Red area as kind of a utilitarian area, where I did errands and things like that. It's actually a place that I'm going to want to go to and be in going forward, based upon the vision that, that I think is being laid out here. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, together with city staff, on the commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just remind the council that we have maps of Bell Red on our dais here, if you want to reference them? to reference them?
Great. Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. As mentioned earlier, one of the main objectives of the Bell Red Look Forward is to increase capacity for housing and job growth. The Bell Red Look Forward Comp Plan Amendment would increase development capacity by over 11,000 housing units and over 950,000 square feet of non-residential space. It would do this by expanding the station area nodal designations, increasing maximum intensity allowed through the FAR amenity incentive system, and by expanding the area designated for residential uses to support housing development. Updated land use designations also provide for distinct economic centers within Bell Red. And as you've just pointed out, you have the map in front of you. Here it is on the screen as well. In the map, you can see the four light rail stations, and there's Wilburton, there's the Spring District, there's the Bell Red Station, and there's also the Overlake Village Station in Redmond that serves Bell Red. When looking for places to increase capacity, areas around these stations were considered the most suitable. And as mentioned earlier, the high-intensity land use districts near the stations were expanded outward to encompass areas within about a half mile of the light rail station. The intensity, again, was increased. And finally, as you can see in the map, the extent of the high-rise residential mixed-use designation shown in brown is much larger, just to support housing development. Policy updates fell under four different themes. The first of which was open space and natural systems. Updates under this theme focused on improving ecological functions and resilience, exploring opportunities for regional stormwater facilities, especially those that may achieve broader environmental and community benefits, working cross-departmentally on stream restoration and rehabilitation planning to facilitate coordinated implementation and partnerships, and then incorporating parks and recreation and natural amenities into public rights-of-way to offer convenient access to nature and a wide variety of recreational opportunities. The next theme in the update was cultural and community connections, and updates focused on growing community capacity to strengthen and promote the Bell Red's Arts District, building greater recognition of the Arts District by enhancing its visibility through arts and culture, securing long-term affordable arts and cultural space, and fostering community connection and learning through events and through securing a central community meeting In this map, you'll see we've also added a designated area for an arts district intensive area. This helps define the areas that we would prioritize art amenities when through the FAR amenity incentive system. And for transportation, updates to policies focused on investing in a complete and connected multimodal transportation system, working with other providers to service light rail stations, developing a multi-use trail system with local and regional connections, and providing for a connected, high-quality pedestrian environment. And last but not least, policy updates related to land use, urban design, and housing focused on cultivating distinct economic centers and neighborhood districts in Bell Red, providing for a diverse range of housing and services within each district, promoting the preservation of small businesses such as ethnic grocery stores, as Chair Gepel mentioned, incentivizing amenities that respond to unique site characteristics as well. And as Tara mentioned earlier, the initiative benefited from the robust community engagement undertaken as part of the overall periodic update. We heard, we learned from community that they had strong support for placing capacity for growth near frequent transit, especially centers like Bell Red, encouraging a variety of housing, including family-sized apartments, restoring streams and incorporating them into the site design, promoting a high-quality pedestrian experience, securing long-term affordable commercial space for arts and cultural organizations, and strong support for ensuring a connected, active transportation network. And key takeaways from the environmental review were to increase heights and densities near light rail, mitigate displacement of small businesses, and consider environmental health impacts to sensitive uses near freeways.
Yeah. Mayor, that completes the presentation. We are open for any questions, and the materials for Bell Red were on the same timeline as the overall comp plan, so published in the council packet on Thursday.
Okay, good. Thank you. Let's start with our deputy mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you again. Another great milestone. Bell Red already has a strong foundation, but your job on this work takes it to the next level, reinforcing the policy framework that will guide important code updates moving forward. Again, a special thank you, Sir Chair Gopel, for presenting the final Bell Red recommendation tonight. Over the year and a half, you guys held 10 dedicated meetings to review and shape the future of Bell Red. I was in all of them, and you guys showed one slide about policy, and I remember that you guys went policy by policy. The package that you guys had on your desk was this tick, and you went word by word and make it better during the process. So I appreciate you guys. Your thoughtful discussions and guidance were instrumental in the development of this plan. You guys heard a wide range of voices, gathering input from all interested parties and incorporating their feedback, also from other boards and commissions. This effort is truly helped shape the vision that we are all aspire to. Finally, staff again, great job, again, making something very complex, easy to digest for not just Planning Commission or council, but for the community. So thank you so much for work on Bell Red Look Forward. This is, as you mentioned several times, I like this for this one-city approach. This, you develop forward-thinking policies and land use recommendation that will help advance the bold vision that we have for Bell Red, looking forward for the next step. And thank you so much again. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I want to echo all the compliments and the accolades. Great, great work all around. Given the late hour, I'll get to it, though. So the reason why we're looking at the Bell Red Look Forward, or I guess Look Forward, is I didn't quite, I think, develop the way everyone thought it would when it was maybe looked at before rezone. The reason is because the FARs are too low, and the city imposed, I think, probably too many costs to develop. And so there were very rare developments in general, and economically was more beneficial to keep existing uses in place, which is not what we want as a council, right? We all acknowledge that we need more market rate, more affordable housing. So the question I ask myself as I look at this is how can the city reduce costs of development or further incentivize that development? Are we increasing the FARs so that we can get the development we're looking or hoping for? Will the FARs be similar to Wilburton or less? And if less, why less, given Bell Red has significant light rail infrastructure? And one of the things that is a major cost driver when I'm looking at this in Bell Red is a requirement that private developments build out an entirely new road grid system. This is a tremendous cost, not only for vehicular roads, but the bike and the ped lanes and the utility infrastructure. This is a tremendous cost that we're burdening developers. It eats into that site area that can be developed, and it's very, very expensive. So again, are we going to get the result that we're looking for with this? I know in the city of Redmond, the city requires the same, with the difference being, though, that the city puts the road grid on the capital improvement plan, which is my understanding. Emile, you might know better than I do, but that's my understanding. So that, and the reason they do that is that developers can get impact fee credits, right? Or a compensation, at least in part, for developing that city infrastructure that they are building out. So have we thought about doing that in order to reduce some of the costs and some of the burdens from these, from developers and from the density and development that we want to see? So there are a couple of different questions there. Also, on the environmental side, as you know, there's a lot of streams that crisscross in the Bell Red area, which could also potentially impact the developability of projects, and those critical area buffers can mean a loss of developable areas. So what is staff thinking here in terms of how we can utilize private development to get environmental benefit while also making it economically feasible to bid, or sorry, to build? And then lastly, I just want a clarifying question. I think it was on Slide 14 about small businesses, and you highlighted, which is fantastic, the ethnic restaurants or grocery stores. But when you say small businesses, does that include all small businesses? Because Bell Red has a condensed area of a lot of auto body shops, tire, oil. I mean, these are critical needs that, you know, pretty much everybody needs, unless they don't get around with cars, but other, and as Chair Gopel mentioned, goes there a lot for errands. So will these businesses survive this type of redevelopment? Is it kind of anti-displacement that we have for all small businesses? Or support for all small businesses? Or are we just solely focusing on the grocery store? So sorry, that's about four questions.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and hit the four. So we got the local street network, the environmental densities, and then small business. So Gwen, why don't you start off on those, and I can add on as needed on those four questions?
Sure. Yeah, and it was the first one on FARs, are the FARs too low?
Yeah, let's talk about how we expanded FARs, expanded the area of the nose and the densities as well.
Sure, yeah. So just in terms of the FARs, we did hear from the community, especially during the environmental review period, that they wanted us to study higher FARs in Bell Red. And so we did increase them to what they suggested, the heights of being 250 feet instead of 150 feet. A lot of times, that 150 feet just doesn't pencil for a high rise. They need it to be much higher. And the FARs that we studied were what we call an assumed average achieved FAR, so they weren't, it was kind of a broad range to get the full cumulative impact. They weren't exactly what the code would be. Those would be higher because some would be developed higher, some would develop lower. But I do feel like that the FARs that we studied are higher than what they are today and would provide for that. As far as comparison with Wilburton, Wilburton had kind of the highest of high rises, which we didn't, the urban core level, which were not considered in Bell Red. So we were more at just the high-rise level, which would be up to 250 feet, not the 350 feet. So that's the difference between Bell Red and Wilburton. So as far as the local street grid, I will say that one of the things the city has spent the most money on in Bell Red is street infrastructure by getting the Tiffiel loan. So we've spent over 194 million on transportation, and there's just a lot of, like you said, transportation is a huge cost, infrastructure cost, and the city is doing everything it possibly can to provide those strong arterial infrastructure to support development and make it more of a multimodal system, as you've mentioned. Some of the local street grids, that's where we have, from the beginning, encouraged developers to pay for that infrastructure. It's an interesting idea in terms of getting impact fee credits. You know, it's possible that during the LUCA process, there would be opportunity to explore some of the ways we could implement the local street grid better. I don't know for sure if we've heard anything about, you know, looking in that direction, though it would still be something we would need developers to contribute toward. As far as streams, the main way we have of encouraging stream integration is using the FAR amenity incentive system. So currently, development can get the FAR bonus by incorporating some additional protection for streams. Currently, the regulation that regulates our streams is our critical areas ordinance, and that is not part of the LUCA update for Bell Red currently, but it is part of something that will be coming in our future work plan, starting, I believe, in 2025. So that is something that we'll be looking at. It is something that we've recognized as a huge challenge, and I'd say that what we have been looking toward doing is developing, recognize that we need to kind of develop partnerships with developers to be able to achieve some of these high goals for streams, especially daylighting of streams. And then the fourth one, as far as the small businesses, I would say that every policy in the volume one plan applies to Bell Red. So any policies that were for preserving small businesses that are spoken to in volume one apply to the volume two plans.
So how is the small business defined then?
It's not defined in the comp plan, you know, specifically, because that would be more of a, an implementation piece to get more detail. So something could be defined in the code as far as what kinds of amenity, you know, how we might identify a small business to preserve them. What I will say, we do have in Bell Red, though, are a couple of things. One is we recognize that there are existing businesses there now, and we didn't want it to be too much of a shock. So there are provisions within the plan and in the code that allow for existing businesses to remain and even kind of, you know, not expand too much, but still be viable businesses. They don't have to necessarily redevelop right away. As far as providing for like anti-displacement amenities and things like that, I think that's something that we are going to be looking at with the LUCA to figure out what can work best. And that's primarily what we were looking at in Bell Red was just specifying the unique ones in Bell Red. So the ethnic groceries and the arts and culture organizations were some of the two that we highlighted. And there, it's looking for ways that we can incentivize the provision of more affordable space so that those businesses can find new locations.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. We want to wait till the LUCA to talk about and implement the anti-displacement as well as defining the small business, because I want this, my preference would be that this would apply to all small businesses and not just zero in on a narrow category. But going back to the street grid, you know, my concern is that five years, we look back, and the developers know where we wanted it because of this burden that we're putting on developers. And from what I've heard time and time again, it is so significant that what will end up happening is that everyone will just sit on the property that they have. They won't develop it because of this burden of developing the street grid, the street, the bike, the ped, the utility, it's just, the costs are just so astronomical. So I just, I'm concerned that they're not going to see a way forward on this, or it's not going to pencil, and then we're not getting the density that we want, especially from a housing perspective. So if you have any other thoughts on that, let me know.
Yeah, let me do a brief response to that, councilmember. We work closely with the property owners out at 130th. So that station out there, the Bell Red Station, is really, that's the case study where we have a very fragmented parcel ownership from how it developed, as opposed to the Spring District, that was a big 36-acre parcel. So that's where those issues are most evident. So the good news is we work closely with the property owners and developers out there to redo the policies in the plan, and they're very happy with the policies that we have right now. So we took a close look at the policies that were in the 2009 plan and tried to provide more flexibility, really, in those policies. So when we do get to the code work, we're going to be looking back and saying, these were the old policies, these are now the new ones, and we need to work more flexibility into those code provisions for the local streets.
Okay, okay. And then we did not look at some type of impact or some type of credit for developing that infrastructure for those developers, similar to the city of Redmond? Do we ever look at something like that?
No, I think that would be a good follow-up to do to learn more about how they're, essentially they're designating, it sounds like, streets in their capital improvement plan, and then you can take in money from the developer to get impact fee credit. So that's the case study we want to look at.
Okay, yeah, we'd have, can we take a look at that? Thanks. Thanks.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, really good work. Bell Red is an exciting, changing neighborhood. I just think more housing, mobility, art, and creativity, more parks and connections to nature and more gathering spaces. I share Chair Gepel's enthusiasm for what's going to come in Bell Red. And I think it's just really going to add to the heart and soul of our city. So thank you for all that. It is definitely very exciting. Couple of issues that I wanted to raise, and Councilmember Nguyen-House did a really good job speaking to a couple of them. Certainly agree with the small business and displacement, and not only business owners, but workers in that area, too. And this is going to be quite a change. And so as we're looking at ways to support small businesses, I hope we also think of ways we could help with the workers who are employed there. Wanted to, and the street grid is certainly something I wanted to address. I'm just wondering if in BR81, we could just remove the word limited? And I'm not suggesting maybe we put in maximum flexibility. But if we just took out limited, we had flexibility. I think, too, it's not, I mean, Councilmember Nguyen-House's point is very well taken. But I just wonder, too, I don't want to be locked into like an antiquated street grid or cars. So I wonder if that kind of flexibility might help us build bike infrastructure, for example, where maybe not every street needs to be, you know, two lanes with a center turn lane, but we had something maybe smaller. And so that, I wonder if that flexibility might help support some other modes of transportation. So if limited, maybe that's a fix. We take out limited, and we just say we're going to have some flexibility. And other than that, those are all my comments. Well done, and thank you.
Which one was that on? What number was it?
It was BR81.
BR81, okay. All right, Councilmember Stokes.
I don't have any questions specifically. I think it's a good, really good work on this. And I just want to listen a little more about this. And again, I think we've had a lot, this is going to make a lot of difference. I think we're going to have some conversations about, there's differences between people who live out there and people who work out there. So I think we need to work through those. But this is something we've been working on for a long, long, long time. And it's one of these things where we get started working on it, and then people kind of don't want to change it in a certain extent. And it's a strange area in a sense. It's a different one, we don't have anything like this in Bellevue. But it has great potential. And I think you've done a good job in terms of the residential use and mixed use and increasing that. The issues and the things that Councilmember Hamilton mentioned, I think, are things to look at in terms of how do we work on the transportation pieces out there? It's probably one of the most complicated layouts in terms of streets and everything else that we have. But it also is a very vital and a very, just a lot of traffic, a lot of things going on out there and a lot of changes. And I think it really is another place that is just sitting on the cusp of a great, a lot of changes. I know a lot of people who have the property there have been looking for a long, long time, want to move on it. So I think we have a lot of impetus to move forward on this. And I think overall, it is a good plan. It's just that, kind of you get to the details, we have to work some of those things out. And I'm not quite sure, in listening to some of the owners of, you know, properties that are, I think there's some, still some questions that the people who want development are still not quite sure how they want to do the development. And there's some conversations going on, and there are different camps with that. So it's something that's kind of complex, and it's just a very different area. But I think you've done a really great job of laying all this out. And it's going to take some time to, I think, work this together and put it so that we can move forward on it. But I think it's, I think it's just a huge improvement from what we've been trying to do in the past. And basically, I'm happy with it in that I think it addresses the needs. I'd be glad when we get into some of the more details on it and discuss that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zion.
Yes, thank you. I join my colleagues in thanking you for this work. You know, really, this threads a needle through all of the different interests and pieces in this area. And I do think it's, you know, quite unusual. There are two light rail stations within Bell Red and then two that are within the walk shed of Bell Red. So thinking about it as transit-oriented community is really important. I like the fact that you've got the five different chunks of, like, sub-neighborhoods within it as well that has its own special character. When I think about the art, I absolutely think about art studios where artists are able to live and create art and being able to support that economic development and the vibrancy of that. The stream restoration, you know, in the community engagement, I saw that parks and open space expansion is an important piece. And definitely, when you walk around that space, as it's become less commercialized, that is definitely something that we could take advantage of as we daylight streams, creating some parks and open space around that. So I really appreciate the ability to look at that. I appreciate my colleagues talking about the anti-displacement and the preservation of small business and the discussion around really being thoughtful about with this many light rail stations and all of the small micro enterprises in here, creating as much of a walkable, bikable space as possible. So I also, I got to think about it, but I like the idea that we are not so rigid with our street grids, that we actually inadvertently create issues for ourselves. So how to make sure we avoid doing that? I was also thinking about the fact that, I looked through the whole map, and there are very few areas anymore for general commercial. So I agree with the way this is laid out, where we're preserving as much of the general commercial as possible along the 520. So that does mean that we don't get as much of the tallest building as Wilburton got right next to 405. So I think that's a good trade-off of saying that this is the naturally occurring general commercial. So let's hold on to that for auto dealership or shops and various things. So I really like that. I look forward to the discussion we're going to have on the LUCA, because I do think that that is the space where, as we look at the additional height, what are the ways that we can incent or create the kind of encouragement or policy that gets us the preservation of small business? You know, I think a lot about, you know, the drum shop and the music studio. And those spaces are really gems in our community there. So how do we make sure that happens? I know that we had talked about the art-intensive incentive areas and understanding that, for now, that's where we're looking. But as the art businesses morph and changes, that potentially, that area could shift as well. Right? Because it doesn't currently encapsulate all of the arts businesses that are in Bell Red. But it is a good starting point of creating that intensive space. Right? Okay, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Excuse me. All the kudos and comments I said is the same remains, so I don't need to repeat it. Bellevue is a wonderful place. And I also mentioned that Bell Red Corridor is one of the best planning pieces ever been done by any city in the country, because the transportation and land use concurrently made together. So the road grid, the light rail, the building, it's all done. Okay, the difference is that Bellevue depends on market-driven force. We have no central planning. If it's a central planning, we could have done it all. We don't have to be talking about it. It's done. But it isn't. And the market has changed, so we know that. 2008, 2014, and what's happening, right? All this time. And so I think we have to develop the vision at that time. The only question is, I don't think we have a very clear vision. The vision basically is to create a space connecting Bellevue to Redmond, which is the main campus of Microsoft. So actually, to me, some of us, it's a technology center, kind of technology connection. Okay, so we have a strip of 900 acres connecting Bellevue to Redmond. We have a goal, we have a vision for downtown Bellevue, that's clear. It's the core of the city. We have, Wilburton has a vision. It's connecting East Bellevue to the West Bellevue, divided by 405. So what's vision for Bell Red? I just articulated somewhat, but it's probably not that clear. So that's why the questions of why are we having this, why are we having that? But we did the best we can. It's what is the best based on the nature, based on the things that's already there, stream, and based on what we believe it's important. Business, office, residence, preserving nature. We know on one end, we have the hospital. In the middle, we have art and culture. We have various things all the way along the way. Okay, and some exist, some don't. Some of the businesses we want to have, some businesses we may not. It's a matter at that time, what is desirable. Like we are talking about, you know, Wilburton Auto Dealership. It just didn't seem to be economically the right thing to be placed, such a nice area connecting downtown to Bellevue. So it's a natural market-driven. So market has not coming back as it is, but it has started coming back. But the challenge is that the property is not owned by the government, because we don't have central planning. It's owned by a lot of owners, small owners, and they don't have to sell. We have no control. So the business is coming, developers coming, they have to work based on market. Okay, so we have to do the best we can. And that's what I think Bellevue is doing. That's what the planning department is doing. You guys are doing a great job. So with the light rail coming in, things change. With the Spring District, as you mentioned, Rye Runstad owns, what, 36 acres, 40 acres? They were lucky to have a big chunk of land, they were able to develop it. They're lucky that the light rail maintenance center is located there. So there's some energy that's happening. Okay, but the rest of Bell Red has to develop on its own. And I think we're doing the best we can. So this time around, I think you've done a good job, because you have now, business is very important, developers important. If they don't come, if they don't build, we're not going to have it. If they don't build homes, we're not going to have it. If they don't bring office, we're not going to have it. However, because you have now lots of people interested in Bellevue. Bell Red Corridor is going to be part of Bellevue. With the planning that we have in place, transportation, land use, connection between here and Redmond, it's going to be a place where people want to be. So I like what you have done, with the current directive, you know, that you guys have, the community development, and you have a developers group that's working with you. So they have been talking to you, you've been talking to them. I hope you've been hearing from them. So we have heard from those folks, and they seem to be very satisfied. We're still hearing more, like Councilmember Nguyen-House said. So we need to hear more, but it seems to me that they're satisfied. There could be more, there could be communication, just like we do with the communities that we have with other downtown, what other city development. We have to have a community outreach, but I think you're doing a pretty good job at it. So continue to listen to them, continue to figure out how can we attract market force to come here. Obviously, part of the community we have is small businesses. Okay, but you cannot force them. You cannot do whatever you have to do. They have to go wherever they feel that it's the right thing to do. And we have to feel that it's appropriate for them to be where it would encourage our vision for Bell Red Corridor, right? So I believe that we're on the right track. We just need to do more, listen better, and figure out how. Also, you are getting new challenges. You want to reserve natural creeks and so on. When you develop the plan, you don't know what's, I told you before, devil is in the detail. Once you start digging, so we want to make a utility, environment, natural preserve, you don't know what's underneath that, no idea until you start digging here. So you don't know how it's affect the other buildings, that you're planning to do something else. But you have to be nimble, you have to be flexible. And that's what we are here for. That's why you have, every 10 years, you got to have a plan revision. You have to listen, you have to maybe flexible, you have to make those changes. So people will continue to come, people will see, they know that you're listening to them. They will make the right decisions, we can help them. And that's the, so I like this, I like what you've done, I approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I cannot add any more to that. So we've heard a suggestion from Councilmember Hamilton to change BR81 to read, "Allow for," strike out, "limited flexibility to implement the intended alignment and function of local streets where site constraints exist." And I'm wondering if there's head nods to do that? Is everybody okay with that?
Could you read that one more time?
It would read, and do you think we need to make a motion to make this change?
I think you can just provide verbal direction.
Okay, so I'll just read it to you. I move, oh, no, sorry. BR81 to read, "Allow for," and then strike out the word "limited." So it just says, "Allow for flexibility to implement the intended alignment and function of local streets where site constraints exist," as opposed to "allow for limited flexibility."
Can you explain to me what does it mean by limited flexibility? I'd like to hear maybe, Councilmember Hamilton, explain it again.
Yeah, sure. That had some good discussion at the Transportation Commission and the Planning Commission. So I'll let Gwen and Chair Gepel, if you want to chime in as well.
Yeah, I think the one thing that we heard mainly was from staff who implement the land use code in that when we have kind of ambiguous language, it's harder for them to implement policy. And so they preferred keeping the word "limited" so that it was more defined as far as, I mean, it explained that the limitation was where there are site constraints. So it wasn't just any kind of flexibility, it was limited to where there are site constraints, that there would be flexibility on the alignment to put in the roads, or the alignment and the function of the roads. That's just, that was the feedback that we heard from staff in terms of needing language that was not ambiguous.
Can you give an example?
Well, I think flexibility can be interpreted in so many different ways. It could be...
Example of limited versus flexible? Give me example.
So what we typically run into in Bell Red is that the street grid in the code is just sort of a small map with a lot of lines on it. And where the lines align with parcel lines is sometimes doesn't work for developers, because it's not on the parcel line. So we've been able to adjust the location of the road so that it can work for development more easily. And that has been how we have been implementing. We have had some flexibility in terms of being able to adjust the location of the local street so that it works for development.
Is this legalese for limiting to where site constraints exist? When site constraints exist?
Yeah, so where we've found there are problems with perhaps getting... Yeah, so the, where sites, where we've found there are problems with perhaps getting an actual vehicular connection would be where the topography is quite steep, then it might not be possible.
Because you already have that in there. I'm not sure why you have to put the word limited unless it's legal language to limit it to just those conditions. I don't know.
Oh, you're saying allow flexibility to implement where site constraints exist? That's, that is, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, it's already there. It's already happening.
I was just going to say, from the, you know, commission's standpoint, we didn't actually parse that particular word. But, I mean, at least hearing the, you know, the proposal that came forward from Councilmember Hamilton, it makes sense to me, just for what it's worth personally. But we didn't, we didn't parse that, that particular language.
I'm just wondering if legally we have to write it that way?
I don't.
What does Trisna say?
You could certainly get, yeah.
Based on this discussion, and I don't have the specific language in front of me to be able to fully decipher, but from what I gather from the conversation, I don't think you need the word limited in order to get at the intention that you're, you are talking about.
Okay. So can I have?
Oh, yes. Councilmember Stokes.
Can I make one more comment?
Yeah.
A couple of things I just skipped over. One thing to mention is the Belred Arts District and how that comes into it. I think that's something that's of real, of real value and something that's really kind of taken root and going very good on that. So that's, that's changing that a lot. And the other thing is what we have to take into account of on this is the impact of the Spring District. And if you've been out there anytime recently, that, that's, there's been a lot of changes of the, in the evenings and people going places, and of course, to the brewery and everything else. But it's certainly changed in just a short, fairly short time period. And the other question, the question I had was some issues of how do we, how are we working together with the Belred and Wilberton? You know, you have northeast Redmond, Bellevue Redmond Road, and you have a little bit on that side along there, and the rest of it's in there. How are we, how are we coordinating the work on Belred and the work in Wilberton? And make those, if we treat them like they're separate, you know, places, that's, I think, is, we lose some things from that. And are we doing some work to kind of work in some cohesive way with both of those areas, particularly up in this, the, you know, the Belred and then parts of, and I know that the properties and everything and the businesses are kind of back and forth in that. So it's almost like this is a big district we've cut in two, in a sense.
Yeah, you're correct in that we, the, part of Belred was in Wilberton. So there was that boundary change that you approved earlier on for Wilberton. And our, our goal was to make sure that it was clear in terms of where the boundary was for Wilberton and Belred going forward. But it's also been our intent to make sure that the land use districts are similar to one another so that they work together. And, and we certainly were aware of what types of land use districts were there when choosing to recommend the types of land use districts.
Yeah, if you don't have the map, you don't know where you are, in a sense.
Yeah.
You know, when you're driving around there. I just, it, it is a, it's a really interesting thing to have that piece. And there are differences, but to a great extent, particularly in this area, this is an artificial boundary in a way, so.
Yeah, no one will know.
So I seen, okay, Councilmembers on?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, going back to Councilmember Hamilton's change. So when I read this and then I hear what you're saying, what I hear you saying is that BR eighty-one was intended for the, we have an intended alignment and function of local streets, and that this provision was to allow staff and development some flexibility only, only where limited by site constraints. So taking out the word limited does not actually give any more flexibility to change the intended alignment and function of local streets.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear on that because at that point, taking out the word limited would actually not change the essence of this.
I don't think so.
Of this sentence. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear, and maybe we're actually talking about something slightly different in, in make, having some flexibility about where exactly the streets go ultimately. I'm just clarifying with Councilmember Hamilton, what you intended, because.
Well, as I read it, limited modifies the flexibility, not the location where we can be flexible. So I think.
We're just out of the gate saying we're going to give limited flexibility in general. If, if you wanted to move it down and have it be in limited areas, you know, we have that flexibility, that's fine, but.
Limited to where site constraints exist?
Yeah, and I actually kind of find that a little bit vague. I mean, just the word limited, what does that mean? You know, normally we would give eighty percent flexibility, but in this case, we're just going to do ten? I think flexible is flexible. So I think it is important to take that out. And it's for that reason. And to me, it just modifies how flexible we're going to be. Don't count on much, it's limited instead of where we do it.
Can I ask you a question from Emil?
Sure.
Emil, you mentioned there, do you remember a specific conversation in Transportation Commission or Planning Commission in this regard? And if you can, please elaborate.
Yeah, not all the details right now, but I believe it was discussed at the, the Transportation Commission. And I know Gwen, Gwen and I were at or listened in to most all of those. So Gwen, do you remember the, the essence of that conversation at the Transportation Commission?
I'm not going to remember specifically. I'd have to kind of come back.
I think my recollection, my recollection was it was primarily in response to stakeholder feedback. There was a, there were a number of comments relating to that issue.
And do you, on top of your head, do you know if we change that or if we remove that word limited? Would, is there any significant impact besides is not limited flexibility is flexibility?
Yeah, I guess in, in my, my read of it is limited flexibility does, does seem like something less than flexibility. So I guess.
Besides that, there is no other impact, you think?
Yeah, we don't, I, we don't, I don't think we use that exact term anywhere else when we talk about flexibility, that it's limited. So I guess that's an observation, and it is modifying the word flexibility.
Yeah, and I, if the only thing I'm recollecting possibly is that perhaps it was allow for limited flexibility to implement it, and the where site constraints didn't exist, and then.
The wording is very poor, though, if that's.
They, they added that, and that, so then it becomes redundant, like you're saying. It's kind of saying limited where site constraints, yeah.
Just to make it clear, I'd just like to have a motion to amend BR eighty-one to read, quote, "Allow for flexibility to implement the intended alignment and function of local streets where site constraints exist," end quote.
Can I have a motion to?
You should say, so moved.
So moved.
Okay. So any more discussion? Can we just vote all in a favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now you can make this motion.
I move to direct staff to retain, to return with an ordinance approving the proposed Belred Look Forward CPA for council action at a future meeting, as recommended by the planning.
Amended, oh, sorry, sorry.
As recommended by the Planning Commission.
And amended by?
And amended by Councilmember Hamilton.
Is there a second? Okay.
Yeah, so a question before we take the vote.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. The street grid question again. Are we able to look at this before we, I mean, did we allow some space to bring this back two weeks as well?
We do have space on the agenda for September twenty-fourth, if you would like this to come back as well.
I, I still think there's a lot of ambiguity around this, and I would love some further clarification as well as looking at some, as I suggested, looking at some tools to make this pencil out a little bit more for developers for this, the street grid, the multimodal infrastructure that, that, that we need in there before we move this forward into it. Because the next step will be to put it into an ordinance, and we're not going to be able to touch this again. Personally, I would love some more clarification around this and what the impact will be because I still have concerns over it. I might be in the minority on that, but.
I thought that, yeah, that's what I thought, too. I thought that was going to come up with the Luca. That discussion would be in the Luca.
I don't believe it will be. Will it, Emil?
There are, I mean, the policies are important. So I think if you, if there is interest in looking, you know, diving in deeper to the policies, now is the time to do it. There are details in the Luca that are going to need to get modified as far as implementing the, the local street grid, as far as flexibility goes.
So that will get a little bit more into the weeds. But what we're voting on tonight, that'll set the framework for those, those, those street grids.
Well, we have a motion on the table to bring this forward at a future time. And you are asking actually for another meeting, which is a little different than what the motion is on the table.
Correct.
So I don't know where council is on this. I would say if you want to add another meeting, I would not vote for this, and we'll put another motion out. But we have a motion on the table that I think we should put up for a vote. So.
Can I make a?
Councilmembers on?
Well, I really do want to clarify because there are certain pieces that are in the comp plan, and then there are certain pieces in the Luca. So am I hearing you say, Emil, that if we voted this tonight for you to prepare an ordinance, that we would be locking in issues related to street grid that we couldn't address in the Luca process?
I think what I was saying is the, the policies are important. So this is, this is a important document. We did make modifications to the, the grids, the, the local street network policies because we've learned over the past fifteen years that they were inhibiting some development, frankly, especially out at One Thirty, and we tried, we tried to put in more flexibility to them. We, we talked about pet-only streets as well. So there were some changes that were made to those policies. And clearly, there's more details that are in the code, but what the, what the policies, policies say do matter. So we want to make sure that council is comfortable with the, the updated policies. And we are happy to go into more detail on those, if you would like us to.
So the motion on the table is to move this forward as is with Councilmember Hamilton's amendment, as opposed to bringing it back for another discussion. Councilmember, wait, I think we had someone over here. You, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
You're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I personally don't, I see as a comp plan and Belred as the same because the timeline was as the same. So for the comp plan, because of some residence and timeline, we are going to have another solicitation. I think in this topic, because of a council member. So I personally don't have any problem to postpone these to September twenty-fourth, address some of the concerns, and then we move, we direct you for ordinance on September twenty-fourth for both of them.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
I've got a question about grid. You mentioned that some developers have some concern about it. Have we been hearing from them? You, you have had been meeting with the developer stakeholders group. So what you heard? Have you heard it?
Yeah, I mean, I'd say similar to what Councilmember Newenhouse has been saying.
Sorry?
Similar to what Councilmember Newenhouse was saying, the cost of developing the local street grid has been what we're hearing is, is very high and feels, developers feel like it can be prohibitive to actually going through with development. Just the cost of, for them to develop a local street grid is the challenge.
So how important is for that grid, the way that you have it now? Are you compromising it?
There are two.
For the sake of costs? Or whether you need to have the grid the way it is?
Yeah.
That's the first question. Can we, can we modify it?
Well, there are two policies in the plan that speak to the local grid. The one just before, the one that we amended, it's BR eighty, and that was the original policy that's there, which states to provide local streets through development review to establish a new grid system with smaller block sizes, particularly in development nodes, emphasizing continuity, connectivity, and pedestrian-oriented design.
I'm going to stop you for one second. Can I have a motion to extend the meeting?
I make a motion to extend the meeting to ten thirty.
Oh, God.
Hopefully, we finish sooner.
I say ten ten. Say ten.
I make a motion to extend the meeting to ten ten.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, sorry, Gwen, go on.
No, that's fine. I just wanted, just to alert you, there was that policy in there to say to provide for a local street grid with smaller blocks. The idea being that if it's going to be a walkable neighborhood, we want to make sure that there are good connectivity for pedestrians to get to the light rail and things like that. When we heard from the developers that they wanted more flexibility, we added this new policy, which was the allow for limited flexibility to implement the grid where site constraints can stress, can exist. So that's the new policy that we added so that we could incorporate some flexibility. How much flexibility that directs us to do is a question. I think it's up to you whether you, whether you still want, you know, how, how you would like to deal with these policies. But I think the first one is to really look at number eighty and see. That is the policy about the grid.
So what's the staff's recommendation? Do you think that we should just be flexible as developers wishes? Or should we think, do we think that's important to have the connection that you're talking about as our original intention and keep those connections? What's more important?
Well, I.
The developers who walk, if they don't have that?
What I have heard, I mean, what I, from my, what I've learned through planning is just that having a small block size is, is helpful for building a walkable neighborhood. How that walk, those block sizes develop are in the details, right? So that's kind of how.
Which are the land use codes.
Yeah.
So I'm going to take a turn here and say that I read the policies, I like the amendment. I, we've all heard the horror stories of having to put in a major street grid when it really isn't suitable for that site and not very feasible. And when I've talked to staff, you've said it's not necessarily a car street. It could be a walking path, just something that carves up. Is that right? Or is it necessarily a car street?
It's my understanding that we generally interpret it to be a vehicle, vehicular street, unless there's a reason not to have a vehicular connection.
Mm-hmm. So I, I would, I'm good with the policy as it is, but when the land use code time comes, that's when I want to really, you know, look at this specifically. So I, I am okay with the policies, and I appreciate the change that you made in it. Are we ready to take a vote on moving this forward to staff without an extra meeting to change, possibly to discuss the policy more? All those in favor, say aye. I'm going to say aye. All those opposed, say no?
No.
No.
Okay, so.
I say no, Melissa.
So it passes four three. Okay. So I'm looking forward to a robust discussion on land use codes. Okay, let's see. So there are two written reports in your packet that are actually very interesting. I encourage you to read them on Economic Development Activities in Progress and also Genesee's wonderful Intergovernmental Affairs Monthly Update. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.